Good evening, Ms. Huggins. Ms. Denny, can you guys hear me? Ms. Denny, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ed.
Thank you, Carlotta.
Mr. Kelly, we can hear you and Ms. Bailey. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I can hear Ms. Anita.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Thank you. Mr. Kelly, you can hear us too?
Yes, ma'am. I've got you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, want to call the meeting to order. Obviously, I'm remote today, out of town on business, but I asked Mr. Grabowski to stand in for me and chair this meeting. So, over to you, Ms. Grabowski.
I can hear you. Now, take it on. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to bring the January 28, 2024 Charleston County District Committee of the whole meeting to order. The first item would be item 1B, the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as presented with a question.
And that be?
Item 7A, new contract officer position in procurement department. I'm not sure when you all went to the audit and finance, not, excuse me, when you went to agenda setting, it seems like this item should have come through the Audit and Finance Committee vice the Cow, because there are lots of questions relating to this item. And I would prefer if the board would send this to Audit and Finance than back to the board.
Ms. Huggins?
Ms. Grabowski, that, if that's the will of the board, it's certainly something that we can consider. The reason that item came forward typically would not, this item would not come forward to the board or to Audit Finance for consideration. The only reason it's coming to the board is because it would be a change to the organizational chart, a new position requiring board approval. So again, typically, these positions not at the chief level or the deputy superintendent level would not come to the board for consideration. However, again, very open to bringing this to Audit Finance instead of the board if it's the will of the board.
Any further questions regarding Ms. Roberson's request?
If the board has, would like me to further explain my rationale.
What I'm thinking of doing or recommending is to keep the agenda as is and when we get to this item, to bring it up. And that's when we would go ahead and, you know, take on a debate and take on action at that point. So with that, I'll return back to the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Some of. Second.
If we could have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, it passes.
She's got us set up.
I'm sorry. Jumping the gun.
Ms. Trudy, I vote aye. This is Ed.
Yeah, I was aye too.
And also, I, I'm having trouble signing into board docs.
Ms. Trudy, can you see the votes? And the motion passes. Onto item two, the annual reports for the constituent boards. I've talked to my, a lot of my fellow board members, and the way we will be handling this is each constituent board will get 10 minutes to present, and then we will leave the board members two minutes each for any follow-up questions. We'll just go district through district. So, Ms. Timekeeper, it's going to be switching around. First up would be District 9.
Maggie, Chair Smalls Ford is on Zoom.
I keep looking around. Can we focus solely in? So is it the Reverend Smalls Ford, Ms. Ford? Ms. Ford, can you hear?
I can hear you. I'm having some technical difficulties because I'm trying to get to a spot to park. I live exceptionally far in a rural area, and I'm having some difficulties right now.
We can hear you.
You can hear me fine?
Yes. And as long as you can hear us, I think we're good.
Yeah, I'm not looking at the screen. So, well, I would like to say good afternoon to everyone, to Chair Mr. Grabowski, Vice Chair Watley, to, of course, my district leader, Ms. Roberson, to all of the constituent, all of the Board of Trustees, to this thing for superintendent, to everyone in the room, everyone listening today. It is my pleasure coming for you this afternoon to present our synopsis and our outlook on District 9. I would also like to greet my fellow board members, Vice Chair Dr. Karen Simmons Palmer, Ms. Monica Smith, Ms. Jeray Green, S. Y., our newest board member, Mr. Leon Green, and also Mr. Jeff Fine. We're looking at our Charleston County School District, three first of four.
Ms. Ford, you're breaking up on us. You're coming in every other. So we probably missed your last three sentences.
I think we just lost her. I believe so.
Has she dropped off?
Yeah.
I think one of the recommendations, we're going to move on to another district, and hopefully she can come back on, and then we'll confirm that she's got a better link and give her some time. We'll put her at the end. So we'll just hold off on that. So moving on, we'll go on to District 1. And if you could please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Marie Snyder Fasine, and I'm a member of the District 1 Constituent School Board. And this is my fourth year.
Welcome.
Constituent Board 1, 2023-2024 Annual Board Report. Mr. Thomas L. Colleton, Chair, Ms. Cynthia Diane Gathers, Vice Chair, Members, Ms. Shirley Mitchell Colleton, Ms. Cheyenne Simpson, Mr. Jamon Blake, and Ms. Addie Kemp. Pillar 1, regular grade level instruction. Pillar 2, high-quality teachers and leaders. And pillar 3, wraparound services. Charleston County Constituent Board Duties to Assign Students to Non-Magnet Local Schools in the Constituent District Subject to Appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees. Student Transfers to Consider and Determine Student Transfer Requests Subject to Appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees. Student Discipline to Hear and Decide Student Discipline Appeals Subject to Appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees. Annual Reports Make Annual Recommendations to the CCS Board of Trustees Relative to the Educational Affairs of its Districts. Attendant Zone. District 1 and District 2 Boards Will Have to Work Together to Establish Zones Necessary to Populate the New School in Alwindaw, South Carolina. The Joint Collaboration Will Not Aid with Creating Attendant Zone, But Also Provide an Opportunity to Gain Impetus of Curriculum Development and the Educational Theme for the New School. The District 1 Board Will Be Taking a Keen Interest in the Process of Redrawing Attendant Zone, Especially in the Northernmost Part of District 2, Which is the 10-mile Alwindaw Community and the Tupelo Subdivision, In Order to Adequately Populate the New Proposed Middle and High School in Alwindaw. Currently, 235 high school students living in District 1 attend Wando High School. The new school is expected to be built with an occupancy of 500 middle school and 500 high school students. Therefore, the rezoning is a pertinent part of the new school process. Exploring a partial magnet concept that would allow zone students to attend. Seats will be available for out-of-zone students to apply through a vetted application process. Student Transfers All transfers should be limited to in-scope, Only granted in crucial hardship situations. Once transfers are received, they will be approved or disapproved per Charleston County School District Policies and Directives. The constituent board can transfer students from one school to another school within the same constituent district. So as to promote the best entrance of education as well determined, The high school within their constituent district in which students shall enroll, Subject to the student's right to appeal the board's decision to CCSD Board of Trustees. The Smart Choice Program states that each school-aged student in Charleston County is assigned to a neighborhood school based on grade level and home address. In addition, CCSD offers specialized programs, magnet and charter schools, to which students can apply. 2022-2023 School Transfers Definition and Data. School transfer is the number of students who attend other schools. Total live-in students residing inside of a school attendance boundary, Regardless of where the student actually attends school. Live and attend in: Students that live inside a school attendance boundary and attend the school. Live out and attend in: Students that live outside the attendance boundary for that school they attend. Live in and attend out: Students that attend a school outside the attendance boundary for which they live. Total Enrollment: 206 students currently attend St. James Santee Elementary Middle School. Total live-in: 338 students reside in District 1. School attendance boundaries, regardless of where the students attend school. Out of county: 3 students. Total live-in and attend in: 206 students. Live out and attend in: 6 students. Live in and attend out: 111 students. Districts that students attend school outside of District 1 are District 2, District 4, and District 20. Recommendation: Direct transfers back to the home district prior to being reviewed and approved by the receiving district. Student Discipline: For the last two consecutive school terms, District 1 Constituent School Board did not have any student disciplinary hearings. However, the board did have a few, three disciplinary hearings this school year thus far. We still have some concerns with students from District 1 attending Wando High School and District 2. In all known cases, the District 1 Board is still getting, is still not getting any notification from District 2 on any disciplinary hearings involving the District 1 scholars. We are back to having in-person board meetings as well as disciplinary hearings. District 1 Constituent School Board remains concerned about the educational well-being of all of our high school students attending schools outside of our district. Working closely with the African Methodist, the AME Church, and the administrators at Wando High School, a mentoring program has been established to assist, encourage, and support our scholars. In summary, we are still requesting notification before disciplinary hearings involving any District 1 student that are held, are held so that we may attend. Our scholars deserve to know that we are concerned about their educational endeavors, regardless of any disciplinary actions that may occur. Annual Reports The District 1 Constituent School Board has begun to hold its monthly meetings in person and the following COVID-9 program after following COVID-9 protocols. In doing so, we have invited our constituents to attend, not only for us to hear any and all of their concerns, but also for us to share information affecting the environment, affecting the educational environment of their students. We will share some of the exchanges that were identical in nature. The concern like, when will the new school be built? Concerns, questions about stories that are in the news relating to the operation of CCSD under administration of the new Board of Trustees, of the current Board of Trustees. Concerned the issue about certain books being banned in our schools due to unfavorable content is one that we have very seldom received, a lot of concerns in the past, but has increasingly become an issue of great concern. The St. James Santee Elementary Middle School currently has no teacher vacancies. The new music teacher started early spring of last year and has created a fully functioning, thoroughly equipped music lab with brand-new instruments that students are learning how to play. The St. James Santee Elementary and Middle School continues to be a site for the Low Country Food Bank distributions between the McLeodville and Alwindaw communities. The second Wednesday of each month is designated for food distribution. The elementary school unfortunately received a below-average on its 2023-2024 report card because there were not enough students for the subgroups to be graded. Results show the elementary school needed just one more student, and the probability of earning at least a good score would have been likely. The middle school received an excellent grade for the first time in more than seven years. The curriculum continues to grow with recent additions to high school credit-earning opportunities for the middle school students at St. James. Geometry was a recent addition to the eighth graders' curriculum for the 23-24 school year. A teacher must funny, the eighth-grade math teacher has volunteered to tutor students who may need the additional help. The Head Start program at St. James is fully staffed for the first time in more than two years. Every teacher is certified and fully trained. Enrollment for both Head Start and early Head Start has a capacity, is at its capacity, and there are two children actually on the waiting list. The aftercare program was implemented last year, and parents continue to express their appreciation for the extended-day students. The District 1 Constituent School Board.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
I do have some questions. My first question goes back to the elementary school rating, and I think this really goes to Ms. Huggins. Is this a problem that we face with a lot of our smaller schools on our ratings, whereas we're one student short of meeting the subgroup, and then suddenly we get categorized? When you look at the middle school being an excellent, obviously, the elementary schools are doing a pretty good job.
Thank you for that, Mr. Grabowski. I'm going to ask Buffy Roberts, if she would, and Ms. Simmons is shocked, to talk a little bit more about numbers required for subgroup identification and how that impacts report cards. Ms. Roberts?
So, just a little bit about that information. That is not something that happens typically, but there are some cases where that does occur. We have to have at least 20 students in that reported group in order to be counted as a student group or subgroup like she's talking about. When, when something like that does happen, in this particular case, one of the specific groups was the student growth measure. That particular measure, you are really looking at only the students who are tested in grades four and five, so it does not include the other grade level for SE-ready, which would be grade three, because you have to have two years of data in order for that to occur. She actually did have 19 students. That is absolutely true for that particular measure. There, when, again, when that does happen, then you, of course, are not able to score that particular indicator. We do have the multilingual learner progress group, that that happens for a lot of schools, right? Because you have to have at least 20 students in order for that measure to be reported. I hope that helps.
Yeah, it just seems like it's such a draconian penalty when you obviously have a good school, you know, with a track record. The second issue is definitely, and I guess this gets directed, once again, Ms. Huggins, to you. I agree that I think any of the disciplinary actions of a student, in one, there should be a communication system so that, you know, the representative parents, you know, from the constituents. So I think we need to really look into that. As to the new school, this is a new board. It's a long process, as we've learned, you know, and I see Alwindaw, you know, I live in that, in your district, and it's growing. So, you know, there's no question the board's going to be looking at that. Transfers, I couldn't agree with you more, you know. We have, I don't remember seeing any transfers at least so far, but I think we'll be looking pretty strictly, more stingily on granting transfers, but, you know, to try to keep kids in their home schools. So, I think there's a lot of good that's going to be coming down for District 1. I think your report's excellent. I think it, you know, raised a lot of questions, and I'm really proud, you know, that we've got an excellent rating at a middle school. That's why, when I saw that. And of course, it's always great to hear that Head Start's doing well. So, anyway. With that being said, thank you so much for the report.
Thank you all.
And I, these other constituent boards have raised this point, and I apologize for not coming out to your meeting, and I look forward, you know, to being, you know, making sure that I make one of your meetings, because I think that's really good to have that interaction, so we have the face-to-face conversation.
We appreciate that.
So I look forward to attending.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Do any of my fellow other board members have any questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. It was very detailed, and I felt like I was actually in your story as you were telling it. So thank you for writing it out like that. My question is for the staff. And this year, my questions are going to be focused on student outcomes. So whenever I ask a question from the day, it's going to have an implication relating to student outcomes. The young lady from District 1 outlined very clearly the concerns. My question to the district staff is, who has worked with them to address these problems? Question one. And question two is, I know, Ms. Roberts, you answered her question, but my question is, what is the solution?
So the first question, Mrs. Roberson, who works with the constituent boards to address concerns would be the staff liaison. After every, I think, Mrs. Foxworth serves District 1 right regularly. Some other staff members are there. I know Dr. Appleshimer on this side also has been working very closely with District 1's in particular around the Blue Ribbon Committee and the work we're doing to address the potential of a new school out in that area. But more specifically, I appreciate that you and other board members are focused on student outcomes. I think the strongest lever, the people close, the most closely tied to the work in schools and the work in District 1 are the Associate Superintendent Joe Williams, who works so closely with St. James Santee out in District 1, and has really worked hard over the years to get that school to where it is. So I think our Associate Superintendent's members in Mrs. Simmons' office, and I think Vincent Foxworth has a very close connection with them, brings back concerns, details it on a report like all other liaisons after the meetings, and then we follow up as needed with District 1. Ms. Simmons, do you have anything to add from an academic's perspective?
For your second question, Ms. Roberson, regarding, I think you're asking about the issue our board member raised about not having a big enough subgroup to report out. I personally, well, I'll say this, we know that we have some outlier schools like St. James Santee and Jane Edwards, where the size of the school is just going to be what it is, relatively small. So I don't necessarily see it as a problem when the state doesn't give a designation, because we still have the data to analyze how they're doing. So we know Dr. Williams understands clearly where that school stands and how to move them forward in terms of, are they rated average, below average in a particular category? And so not having a designation doesn't prevent us from providing adequate support nonetheless.
Thank you for that, because I was likening your school to my school, Jane Edwards. Thank you. But Ms. Huggins, just to bring it down a little bit more, I guess what I'm asking is the recommendations that they're asking for, who's, is there going to be some follow-ups so that these questions can be answered?
So what we'll do as a cabinet is assess any questions that need to be followed up with the constituent boards, and Mrs. Denny has been charged, and post these reports out to the public and to the Board of Trustees to follow up with each constituent board after the prospective presentations now, and then on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. McKinnney?
No, thank you. This question might be more general, because I've read it in some of the other reports, and it might be a question actually for Dr. Copley, that the discipline issues that occur to a student that lives in one district but attends in another. Is there a way that the resident district is notified of a disciplinary hearing? And that then, like she expressed, they wanted to show support. And that then, like she expressed, they wanted to show support. And then is there a way for the resident district to receive a report on the outcome? Per chance that that student comes back to that district?
So of course, for me and my heart, I would say yes, that's definitely something that I'm willing to do. But we would need to pass that through General Counsel, simply because the homeschool for the students, even in D1, is still located as D2, which would be Wando, therefore the referring school would be Wando. So all of the information pertaining to those scholars would be housed under that D2 umbrella. I am definitely not against making sure that reports are sent out quarterly to D1 for any students who reside within that D1 zone. We would just need to find out from General Counsel what measures need to be put in place to make sure we can share that information since in our Power School State Database, the children are housed under D2.
Thank you.
I can do it for program schools, because the homeschool would be the homeschool, but the program school will be where that student is housed that. So so it's easier to make that decision for our alt schools versus what the homeschool and the zone school would be. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Waters? Dr. Temple?
No questions. Thank you for your thorough reporting.
Ms. Bailey, can you hear us?
Yes, I I have a question. It was going alongside Ms. McKinney's. That's very impressive in your report that the District One didn't have any disciplined hearings in the past two years, a few this year, but none in the past two years. What's working there? That's my question, because that that's very impressive.
I, Mrs. Bailey, a great, a great question. I appreciate trustees thoughtful questions tonight. I think that a combination response from probably Dr. Copley and Dr. Williams is most appropriate. Dr. Williams is in that school regularly and knows the environment that Ms. Brown McMillan has created over time there. And then Dr. Copley has had the opportunity to interchange with the principal and with Dr. Williams in regards to scholars. Again, Dr. Williams is very hands on in regards to his approach. Just because those children have come to a hearing doesn't mean that there certainly have been issues. But I I know firsthand that it's side by side work he's done. And so has Dr. Copley. I'm going to turn it over to the two of you.
So so great evening, everyone. I don't know if we need to tag team, but I, Dr. Copley probably knows more about the deeper data than I do. But one of the things that I I spoke to Ms. McMillan about before she went out to St. James Santee was the need to really delve deep into the community, because it's such a a small area. And that's really like a gym. When you have a community that's small, like really forming some really strong positive relationships with the parents. So that's one of the tasks that she took on, and they've done a really amazing job, just really working closely with the community, bringing the community in. I know yearly they have what they call like some type of May Day Festival. And this past year, the very first year, which is so funny, because I've been to it in the past. And this year, when I went out there, I was just overwhelmed by all the positive energy, just how much bigger that event had grown. And when I asked her, what did you do differently? She said, this year, I allowed my parents to plan the entire event. So the relationships have gotten so strong with the community and the parents that the data that you see, what you're hearing is being represented. So that's one thing I'll say about what's happening at St. James Santee in that community. Would you agree? Okay.
And I am happy to report around the relationship building and talking about the instruction, curriculum, climate within the school. Ms. McMillan has done a phenomenal job about just establishing relationships within the community and also bridging that gap between Wando High School and what the scholars are receiving at St. James Santee. So Wando High School and the Curls Club, which is their African American club that they have at Wando High School, has been working really closely with the St. James Santee. Just before Christmas break, the scholars went out to St. James Santee, spent the entire day with the team, which is not the first time Ms. McMillan has brought her students over to Wando High School so that they could have a personal in touch, look about what's happening within the school building and really understand what they have to look forward to. And when we talk about those expulsion packets, if we were to receive a phone call from Ms. McMillan, it's more so to do consulting around what else can be done to support the students at the school, really trying to engage the parents in the conversation, looking at putting in proactive steps, probation monitoring with students before they actually refer the student for an expulsion hearing. And normally, when we do receive a packet, it is because there's something severely that we have to go for a 700 offense, which is our off campus criminal offense, but very rarely about behaviors that are happening on campus. This does not mean an absence of referrals being written, because referrals are being written. Students are being re-taught and also being monitored within the school building, but really looking at a proactive relationship building approach that's happening within the building. So I I have thoroughly been impressed with Dr. Williams and the support that he's been providing to the school, but more importantly, even Ms. McMillan and the team at St. James Santee.
And Mrs. Bailey, if I may too, just as trustees, if I if I could also just please acknowledge Ms. Pamela Jabar, who is the former principal at Lincoln, Lincoln High School, who also serves as a liaison. I believe we get fine folks on the District One Board and serves an associate principal at Wando High School. And she is instrumental in bridging that gap in the transition of students from St. James Santee to Wando High School. And so we really want to thank her in addition to the work that Dr. Williams and Dr. Copley and Mrs. Brown McMillan has done. Mrs. Jabar has been exceptional to continue the the fostering of relationships within both the D1 and the D2 community. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Bailey?
No, thank you.
Ms. Watley?
No further questions. Thank you. I I will, I I would like to make a comment, though. I had the great opportunity to visit the St. James Santee school with Mr. Barroway and Mr. Kelly. And I have to say, that is a wonderful school. Very much was impressed with what they have going on there.
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun, are you online?
Yes, I am. I have one quick question, and let's go, we'll actually go to Mr. Ms. Barroway and Ms. Shaw. Do we have any update on where we are, where we are at inside of the new school going up inside of Ondal?
Mr. Barelli, did you hear Mr. Calvin's question?
Yeah, he's still on mute.
Mr. Barroway, I think you have some technical issues. So I I'm going to ask.
How about now?
I I see you're off there. I was going to ask Dr. Epp to chime in on the Blue Ribbon Committee. Go right ahead, sir.
No, I was going to say, I think she should go first, because that's the key element to moving moving forward on any school out there. So I I would defer to Dr. Appleheimer to start with.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Dr. Appleheimer, who's really taken the lead as our Associate Superintendent of High Schools and is the former principal at Wando High School and working with the D1 and D2 communities around around this important work. Dr. Epp?
Good evening. Where we are right now, we have done one survey we did back last May, and we only did the survey for, this is for a magnet program to bring to the Ondal McClellanville area so that we can get the 500 students for our high school, 500 for middle. We did, we have a committee. It has about 23 members on the committee, and we meet monthly. We visited some schools up in, some magnet schools up in Connecticut back in April. Seven members of the committee and and I went out to, went up to Connecticut to look at these magnet programs. We came back, we did the survey, and we only did District One and District Two. And we felt like we did not get enough responses from District One. We got most responses from District Two. So what we are doing now is we are doing a second survey that is scheduled hopefully to go out the week of January 28th through February 3rd to all districts across Charleston County. So that we can offer, we we've got some programs that we feel like would be draws to come to that area so that we can get that magic number. And so that's what we're working on now. And again, Reverend E.J. Milligan is serves on our committee. And she has gone out to the churches this, over the holiday break, to let them know that this survey, the 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 parents of the children in District One, that this survey is coming. We felt like maybe when it went out in May, everybody didn't know about it. And there are some parents that don't have access to computers. And so what we're doing this time is we are going to, Ms. LaCarmen McMillan is going to open up the school for parents to come in and do the survey there. And they'll have help from staff members from St. James Santee, as well as some of the churches are going to be open on Sunday to offer this so that we make sure that we are getting input from District One along with across the district. But we are specifically targeting and making sure that those parents in those in the rural areas that don't have access to the internet have an opportunity to do this survey.
Thank you. I was going to exactly mention that, because we see the same thing down in Hollywood, Ravendale area. That we have to be intentional about how we do outreach and going into the rural areas to get those surveys completed when we send them out. So thank you for that, Dr. Epp.
Absolutely.
Great.
Mr. Barroway, I'm sorry, Mr. Kobowski. I just wondered if Mr. Barroway had anything additional to add?
I I would just add from that point, once we get to the we get to a situation where there's an adequate number of students, the district feels that it's sufficient, we would look at identifying funding, come to the board, and then we're looking at a three year timeline, one year for design, two year for construction. We have a significant amount of money remaining in the Phase Four program, which ended in 2022. We have a line item for the for the District One High School. We're holding that money in reserve for that effort. And we would look at potentially Phase Five to finish out the project. It was also listed as a Phase Five project. And in both cases, they are currently unfunded.
Okay, that's that was my next question. How long can those Phase Four monies be held on reserve in perpetuity or whatever?
I I I defer to finance, but I'm not aware of an end date for those funds at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How many students are we needing for this school to open?
500 in middle school and 500 high school. So 1,000.
But they're coming.
They're coming. In addition to the rezoning.
We need to be proactive on this one.
Yes, sir.
Like Ravinale. No further questions from the board. I think we'll try again. Thank you so much for the.
Thank you.
I guess we we haven't hooked up with Ms. Ford. Has she come back on? Then we will move on to District Three. Dr. Campbell?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm George Temple, Professor of Physiology and Neuroscience and the Chair of the James Island Folly Beach Constituent School Board. I've listed the other members here because we're a unified unit. And we're working really hard to keep our school safe and to see to it that every every student reaches his or her potential. The next slide shows you our our duties that I'm sure you're well aware of. I'll I'll briefly touch on them and emphasize the last, which is our annual report stressing the needs of our our school community. Overcrowding in our elementary schools is a concern. And in fact, we considered rezoning, opted against that when we recognized that the Early Childhood Center will, with a community schools approach, will put two, some 200 seats at at James Island Elementary and some 300 at Styles Point. We've also asked for full magnet status for Murray Lusane, which is necessary to more widely distribute this approach and the work to control class size. On student transfers, our former chair worked really hard to align our 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 work with the policies of the Consolidated Board. And as you can see from the data here, that we've considerably improved in this year of the number of requests that were made. And with the with the approach that we did, there there were no appeals. In terms of student discipline, we conduct discipline hearings diligently to make sure that the student is responsible of his his or her actions that have brought him to us, but loses a minimum of instructional time. We want to see some more social emotional services, and I'll touch on that later when I talk about Camp Road Middle. And we'd like to have a list of these services that are available to students. We really encourage to see that the district is implementing restorative practices in our schools. And it's noteworthy that our charter high school has moved to the highest level of implementation of restorative practices. Here, here's where I think the constituent boards can provide good service to the Consolidated Board. Four of our six schools are excellent, two are good and committed to improving. And I want to note here that that success is related to ESER funding. It supports the needs and we need to, the needs of the school, and we need to continue that support. In the December 12th Posting Courier, it noted that we we received some 250 million. And I think Mr. Kobowski and in his report on the city paper says about 260. It's a significant amount. And of this last year, some 80 million was was spent on personnel, training, and student programs. And I know that in the middle of February, there's going to be a report outlining what the, with with data, the success that's that's been possible with this ESER funding. So if move on, Styles Point, Harborview, need computer lab teachers. James Island needs professional development for esteemed teachers. And Camp Road needs continuing funding for the Assistant Principal so that the principal can get get to her job, which which is looking at curriculum and ensuring that students are achieving success. Now, the 5/10th for the band director is something that you'd look at and say, who needs that? This, the the band director out of Camp Road Middle has done a phenomenal job dealing with hundreds and hundreds of students. And it's not just the work that she's doing at Camp Road Middle. She goes out into the elementary schools in our district to entice them to become interested in music. In terms of this social emotional learning coach, I I received today, just today, an email that came from the Camp Road Mental School Improvement Council Leader that this is really something that's having a dramatic effect in in the school. And then finally, Turning Point Academy needs a doubling of its incidental funds. I went out there and spoke with them. These, he receives a minor amount now. And a doubling would would certainly help him provide support to the students that that they desperately need. And then finally, I want to end with something that's no longer a need, and that's that that's something we've shorted it out. No, here we go. That's something is that we were working for a a crossing guard and an intersection that that could be used by James Island Tower High School as well as Styles Point. And I'm I'm happy to report that largely due to the efforts of Dr. Aaron Beasley, who went out and collected numerous signatures. It looks like DOT is going to come through with that. So my my request for you would be to to follow through with that and make sure that DOT is coming across with what they said they're going to do. I thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Temple?
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Temple, for your concise list of of needs. We certainly tried to be out and about in the community. This is a shared community, and we love our James Island Community Schools. So we're always aware and and consistently ask, what is it that they that they need? So my question to the staff then is, how are the needs that are in these reports going to be addressed? And even more specifically, how are they going to be included in the budget process? And I would like to suggest that when the budgets are presented to us, that we see the specific requests that are coming from the constituent boards and how much money that is. I don't want that to be consumed so that we lose sight of what it is. I don't want that to be consumed so that we lose sight of what it is and how we're supporting the schools. So, I think that a lot of effort goes into the school improvement councils that are operating in our schools. And they have identified these needs, these are real needs. We're concerned that some of them may have been filled by ESER and now will not be filled, and yet they're making an impact. So, I definitely do want to see how they will be included and identified in the budget process.
And I want to note that I put on your DS a summary of the needs that I just projected.
I'm so glad you asked that, Dr. Carol Temple, and thank you, Dr. George Temple, for such a thorough report. We I think I was probably aware of every need there because principals have worked collaboratively with their associate superintendents to communicate those things. And through the budget process earlier in the year, we tried to address some of them. In regards to the full magnet status, for example, that's on our cabinet agenda. It's been on there for two weeks. It's on the radar. Dr. Jennifer Squareon behind me in regards to the greater mental health needs and the ESER continuation. Those are things we're monitoring. We'll talk in just a few moments about, on Thursday, I'm very excited to report that we brought together about 40 principals and district leaders who came to talk about prioritization. What do we as a district keep doing? What do we need to start doing and what do we need to stop doing as we approach this budget process? Because that is going to be critical as we look at what we continue from ESER and what we stop doing, either that we funded through the GOF or that we funded through special revenue and how we reallocate priorities to ensure that we fortify schools first, fortify classrooms first. And we had a really good group of principals with us, Steve Larson, I think I saw behind me, maybe a principal or two that is on the screen was there, and we talked a lot about what we've done from ESER that is successful and how we continue that, particularly as you referenced, Dr. Temple. We've received a quarter of a billion dollars over the course of the last three years. So, we're going to be working with our principals and our finance staff, our human resources staff, and our academic staff to make sure we're aligned in a way that supports schools centrally, but also that we budget differently. And I won't say too much yet publicly until we know more of what we can do so that Mrs. Carlin remains upright at her seat. But we're looking at how we equitably fund schools and give resources to principals so that they can identify a point five band, a teacher coach, and whatever else they may need that supports their schools. A esteemed teacher, for example, that we worked hard to get at James Island Elementary. How we continue the things we've done, that we have data that suggests works for children and how we stop things that necessarily may not have provided as strong of a return on investment as we'd like. So, Dr. Temple, that's the long answer. The short answer is, we're going to follow up on these reports. We're going to give feedback, just like we do to students, to all the constituent boards, and like we do to principals so that we know that they know we heard their request. But the biggest piece of this is a very strategic budget process this year that works across our system that changes the way we think about budgets to ensure that what we've done, this work continues and that we're listening to school-based leaders versus projecting from the central office what we believe they need. So, when we come to you, it will be very clear that we've worked with the leaders in schools to make recommendations that support student achievement.
I see this as the legacy of this school board. Will it rise to the occasion and come up with the funds that are necessary to support our students?
Thank you.
Ms. Roberson?
I have no questions. I think Ms. Huggins covered everything. Thank you for that. I look forward to the follow-up. Thank you, Dr. Temple, for your report, and thank you for caring about Turning Point. I have four schools in D3, and Turning Point is one of them, and I did drop off some student supplies several weeks ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just look forward to hearing the new plans that we got coming out from Ms. Huggins. Thank you.
Ms. Watley?
Yeah, likewise. I just did a
Mr. Kelly?
No, sir. I don't have any questions.
Ms. Bailey?
Not at this time.
Ms. Waters?
Just want to thank you for calling attention to the ESER issue and thanking Ms. Huggins for the response. To also look forward to hearing how we're going to sustain things, and also I'm happy to hear that there's going to be a procedure to make sure that we keep us working and that we don't lose things just because the money's gone.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Waters, and I appreciate what Dr. Temple said a moment ago. What we're going to embark on pretty soon, I mean, I'm really, really excited about it, but it's going to require our staff to think differently about how we fund schools. It's going to require principals. I believe we're really excited when we left Thursday about the potential of how we fund schools, but it's also really going to require our school board to think differently about how we fund schools. So, we're excited about that, and thank you for that acknowledgement, Mrs. Waters.
And as I leave, I need to ask staff to arrange a meeting with my Consolidated Board of Trustees member so that we can discuss this further.
We'll put you on the list, Dr. Temple.
Don't go sitting down. Ms. McKenney? I mean, since you referred to the city paper. I'm curious on the magnet, on the Montessori, because that seems to be, you know, an interesting issue on a lot of districts. So, I would like your thoughts as to what you're hearing from your constituents on it. It is obviously a district, I mean, a staff, you know.
One of the things that's foremost, I think, on this is that would more widely disseminate, make more widely available, the Montessori method. And magnet status would also enable them to control class size. And as we all know, class size is critically important to student learning.
So, I guess the concern goes with the homeschool, you know, issue, if you make it Montessori versus homeschool, you know, limiting your homeschool. I mean, I know you're on the first line of attack on this, but anyway, I find it a fascinating issue, but thank you very much for your report.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, I think we'll move on to D20. If you could identify yourself, please.
I'm Downing Child. I'm the Chair of the D20 Board and in my third term downtown. And we think we all know these issues here. For attendance zone, if we move on to the next slide. In general, I
Microphone?
Project.
Can you hear?
There you go.
That's better.
In general, our families seem pleased with Meminger, which is now a full IB program as a zoned option for early elementary. And we are happy with the priority matriculation of qualified students from Meminger to Beust because that's long been an issue downtown. So, it's important to protect this priority enrollment of Meminger and Beust for downtown families. The board took action many years ago to consolidate our school attendance zones between Mitchell and James Simmons Montessori, which opened up that Montessori option for a lot of families. And that people are happy to have that option. It's been pretty popular. With the increased enrollment in Beust, there have been some growing pains we're aware of, especially in middle school. However, we are pleased that there are twice as many seats available for qualified students in this strong academic magnet school. The next slide. One opportunity for growth exists with the Early College at the downtown Fraser Campus, which is an historically important downtown site. District 20 students who are qualified, we think should receive priority admissions at the Early College. So, our board voted unanimously to send this recommendation to you. Although the school is currently under-enrolled, so this is not currently an issue, we would hate for qualified students who live in the neighborhood to be denied access to the program when it reaches capacity since it's right there in their neighborhood. For transfers, we we have just a couple of recommendations. We recommend that CCSD revise the transfer application form to include disciplinary violations or records from previous schools. We don't have access to that information, and sometimes we wish we had had access to that information. And then all schools, we think, should establish and enforce a policy to return transfer students to zoned schools if they violate specific codes of conduct, including attendance, including regular attendance, because regular attendance is an issue at some of our schools as well. For discipline and safety, as George just mentioned, beyond ESER, our schools need continued deep investment in mental health, social, emotional, and wraparound family services. It's just so important for our schools and our community. We're seeing an increase in fightings and in the presence of weapons in our school, unfortunately. And so, we asked last year, and we ask again, that those special gun identifying metal detectors be installed in our schools, starting at Burke High School. We have had guns in our schools, so there is no time like the present to get this going. And then the next slide. This is a concern that we brought up last year, and it's ongoing and it's complicated. But a review of CCSD's high school academic offerings, sports, extracurricular activities, reveals that District 20 has far, far fewer middle and high school opportunities than any other urban or suburban school in CCSD. In fact, our high school students do not have foreign language, sports, arts, theater, dance, or extracurricular activities that are considered basic for a city-zoned school. I encourage your board to compare the full list of offerings at Lucy Beckham High School or any other CCSD suburban high school with those at Burke High School. As you know, we've just discussed, high school funding is a numbers game. Quite simply, we do not have nearly enough downtown high school students to create an equal opportunity high school, even if all of our high school students attended their zoned school. Only 11% of downtown households have K-12 age students, and this number is not projected to increase. So, as a board, we repeatedly raise this concern, but the district seems to ignore the issue. We implore you to take action to provide downtown high school students with the same opportunities that students in Mount Pleasant, James Island, and West Ashley have. In the absence of a plan from CCSD, we propose providing D20 high school students access to surrounding schools through school choice. Through the already existing school choice process, a certain number of seats could be allocated to D20 students in all of our surrounding high schools so that D20 students have access to basic high school athletic, academic, career building, and extracurricular programs without having to test into the academic magnet. Downtown high school students should be provided both access and transportation to these schools, and they should not be asked to travel all the way out to Wanda when Lucy Beckham is only seven miles away. Providing D20 with 20 seats per school, something like that, including Lucy Beckham, would not overwhelm any one school. Burke should be supported as a magnet choice school, which is the way it is operating. But it cannot be the only zoned option for our high school students because there is no way such a small school can offer all that it should to our students, which is exactly what a zoned school should do. So, our downtown students must have supplemental zoned option. And this remains a primary concern for us. We have a lot of parents who are getting, are very, you know, near desperate and finding ways to cheat the system or move, but they are getting denied transfers to James Island Charter and to neighboring high schools that previously parents could have assumed entry, you know. Any questions?
Ms. Waters?
So, I struggle with this, and I've heard a similar presentation from you in years past. And I think that there's a much bigger issue. One, I think, actually Burke has a lot of resources that we often don't talk about when we talk about Burke. There are actually tons of resources at Burke High School. And I think that even if we're thinking about a numbers game, the more students in the building, the better. And so, when we think about this proposal to have choice seats in other areas, just because parents don't want to send their kids to Burke, that's not also going to help with the numbers issue that we have at Burke. I agree with the magnet piece or some sort of enrichment program being offered at Burke that all parents are invested in, those who have historically been on the peninsula, those who are moving on to the peninsula. Because I realize everybody wants somewhere strong to send their kids to school. But we have this issue across the county where I represent in North Charleston. I do represent some D20 schools. This is an issue that is pervasive, and I don't think it's going to be addressed as easily as the items on your list. And I think that we have to really think about the social aspect of why Burke is not performing. And I'm not sure what the makeup of the constituent board is, and I apologize that I have not been to a constituent board meeting for D20. I do think I have three schools in D20. But I would be really interested to know if any of the historic families that have been on the peninsula have given input to any of these decisions and what their thoughts are, or not decisions, but these recommendations and what their thoughts have been.
Well, there are many different parties involved, as you know. Dr. Holmes is on our board, and she's an alumni. Her parents taught at Burke. She's very passionate about Burke. So, I'm not going to speak for her because she speaks very strongly for herself, but, you know, we did collaborate on this. And she did express frustration that this issue was brought up last year. We never get an answer for this. And the issue is, even if we had all of our kids go to the school, it would not be enough to offer, you know, we don't have soccer. We don't have, you know, French, German, not to mention veterinary services, tennis, swimming, like lacrosse. These kinds of things that kids might want to try out in high school. They're never going to have an opportunity at a school that's as small as Burke High School.
Sure.
So, yes, there are lots of things. There are resources that we can, you know, that can be improved at Burke. And there are, you know, lots of opportunities. I think that the program needs to be supported, and I think the magnet program needs to be kind of reinvented. But it's a resource worth supporting, but it just, our demographics, because we have such a small population with kids already dispersed everywhere, don't, there's no formula to make this a functional, like, zoned and neighborhood school that offers all the things that you should be able to experience in high school.
Thank you for your response. I think so the statement lifts, I think, a larger issue that I just want to make sure that is named because I just don't want it to be misconstrued that it's like a uniquely Burke thing. A lot of what you just mentioned that exists at Lucy Beckham, I've been to Lucy Beckham. I saw the veterinary sciences program. I was a bit aghast myself because, you know, North Charleston High School doesn't have that either. Certainly neither does Military Magnet. But I think that just for district folks, there's just a larger conversation about why that is because it doesn't have as much to do with zoning and that sort of thing as much as it does with a whole host of other issues. And so, I agree with equity across all of our schools. I just think that we have to think critically about who gets access to what and how we decide where funding is going to lie for it. And then also how we decide what takes priority when so much is at a deficit in many of our schools, not just Burke. But I agree with some of the points that were raised.
Ms. McKenney?
Thank you for the details and the fact that you all thought with suggestions. And I think these are suggestions that we can carry forward and investigate. So, thank you for the ideas. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
I have a question. Um, I'm sitting here, I'm listening to all of this. And this question came across my mind. What will it take to get these resources? Such as soccer, French, veterinarian, medicine, and other things for Burke High School? Because it is a Burke High School, even though it's small. What would it take? Community involvement, parental involvement, talking to the students and the parents of what? Interest the children have there to see what they can place there?
I think I understand your question. What would it take to, to bring these options to Burke High School?
Yes.
Well, as we were just talking about. The need to get a population, a student population up to 500 to make a viable high school and Burke is well under 500 and the numbers are not going up. So we have, I don't know, 330, I think. So. We would need many, many more students because that's how you get, you know, a wide. Array of, you know, opportunities and classes and courses and advanced and truly, you know. An AP kind of element that would actually work. You would need just a. Far more, a bigger student body. And we just don't have that in our zoned downtown area. We are not going to have that. You know, downtown is very expensive. You can understand why these numbers are going down. Family, families with children are not moving there. It's very expensive. We have had this historical inequity in our schools. You know.
Thank you.
Ms. Watley?
I don't, excuse me, I don't really have any further questions. I think Ms. Waters covered much of what stood out to me as well. But thank you for a very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, um. As you know, Burke is very. And all the D-20 schools are very. Have held a very special place in my heart. Give it the historic nature of each of these schools. And I do have a few questions. My first would be, how many transfers did y'all see coming into Burke this last cycle?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number for you. We have somebody that has this number for us.
Right. Did y'all?
Mr. Calhoun?
Right. Did y'all, well, off. General, did y'all field a lot of transfer requests come in? You remember if it was a long meeting?
Not a lot, no, no.
Um, yeah.
So, Mr. Calhoun, I, I think the Burke zone, I think there are 442. Students in, in the zone that are for Burke. And Charleston Math and Science is pulling from that. And there are 350 students enrolled at Burke. So I don't have the transfer numbers right off, which I can get, but that sort of gives you an idea of what's going on there.
Right.
Superintendent Huggins, if I, if I can just add, looking at last year's data, because I'm sure it's relatively close. Eighty-two students transferred into Burke last year. Last year's enrollment was. Three thirty-four. So eighty-two out of three thirty-four came from out of the Burke zone last year.
But those, those just students are generally coming in through the magnet program and not through the transfer program. So we're not, we're not, you know, we're not seeing those cases.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just, I agree. I'm just, I'm talking about who's coming in from out of the zone.
Right, right, the out of zone. And then, then that guess typically goes down to the next question of abuse. How many students do we currently have enrolled at abuse? And I think this is going to, the, the question's going to lead into larger research of how many students we actually have. At abuse and then how many of those students from abuse go over into the D-20 school? Even if they're from out of district, should, do we have, do they have any type of priority going into Burke being abuse student?
I, I know where you're going, going with that, Mr. Calhoun, and, and no, sir, no, no priority. I think Mrs. Roberts, Ms. Simmons' office can probably get those numbers for us really quickly, but there is no priority. I think. What's happening there, we, we see it. I mean, well, we met with the District 20 feeder pattern. We, we discussed just this, you know, students, you know, James Simmons, for example, what happens to those students? You know, they get recruited elsewhere. They go to. Academic Magnet, they go to SOA, they go to Charleston Charter, they go to Early College. And that's explaining some of what's happening at Burke. And it goes back to the larger question that Mrs. Waters, who stepped away, brought, brought up forward earlier, you know, about what, you know, what. How do we, how do we program and resource small schools and how do we? Increase that, you know, increase that enrollment?
Yeah, and it's, it's one thing to have like academic magnet. My kids, two of my kids went there. And it also has problems with being a very small school because, you know, there, there are not that many extracurricular things. So that's one of the negatives to going to academic magnet. However, it is a homogenous academic, the whole point is it's academically kind of one homogenous group. They're taking the same kind of classes. So it's, that functions very differently and it can pull off being a small school. Even though, I mean, it's much bigger than, than Burke, but. For a school that's supposed to be able to serve all kinds of students as a zoned school. You know, it's been a very long time since Burke has actually functioned that way.
Yeah, I understand. It's, I mean, that just gets down to the point of, you know, we got one disparity that's affecting another one. Since we have the gentrification of downtown Charleston, and we also see. As you mentioned, the numbers of students that are leaving, who are not being able to be zoned for D-20 and not able to get back down to the peninsula. Although we have seen, like, we got people going over to Montessori and to James Simmons and. Over to Booth, they have no problem getting to downtown. So how do we attract them to keep them coming downtown? Also attracting the students that we already have on the peninsula. My. Final question would really lead into. I just lost my thought. I, can you come back to me, Ms. Grabowski? I'm going to pull my thought back, but thank you for your report.
Mr. Grabowski, would, would you mind if, I think, Mrs. Swinton, I, I see her on the call. She's, she's on here for a later agenda item. I don't know if she wants to address, and Mrs. Swinton, you may, you may not. I don't want to put you on the spot, which I, I did, but. Would, would you like to address some of the concerns that you heard regarding, you know. Zoning, the number of students and the things you're, you're attempting to do at, there at Burke?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and to our board chair and others, and particularly to our acting superintendent. Burke High School is a comprehensive high school and it welcomes anyone in District 20. We have two designations at Burke. We are. An AP Academy. We also are designated for Low Country Tech. Students therefore. Students are able to apply to come to Burke as a choice school. And we do have a number of students who do enroll as a result of those designations. We also are part of the Scholars Academy. We do have one student that attends Burke that is a part of the Scholars Academy. I have to admit, I was taken aback by the presentation. From our constituent board chair regarding some of the issues with. Guns and fighting. I'm not sure where that's coming from. But we can talk further. I would really like to have a conversation with her and would love her to come visit Burke. We are doing some wonderful things at Burke and are open to. Enrolling any students. I do believe, though, that as we continue to increase our Montessori. Designations of schools that we're grooming them for schools other than Burke. It appears that that is the pipeline. But we would love to know and to work together with our board, with our. Leadership. To find ways to offer. Other courses that would be attractive to the students who live downtown. You mentioned things like veterinary science. That is offered at Lucy Beckham. Please note that any career and technology program that is of interest to our students can be made available. We just need a cohort of. Five to 10 students who show interest. So if your child or any other child on the peninsula, along with their friends. Would like to start a program at Burke and would enroll, we can, we can oblige them. We have a major health science program here at Burke. We are collaborating with MUSC. We work with Roper. We work with Trident Tech. We have students who are. In position to become. To get their certification in health science and eventually. Have the ability to enroll in the health science programs at the College of Charleston, at Trident Tech, et cetera. We also have. A very viable career and technology program. We have culinary arts here. We have some clubs that are forming that will lead into more career and technology programs. There are a plethora of opportunities at Burke. I just think that people need to avail themselves to those opportunities and just give Burke High School a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swinton, for that. I think you hit on a few things there that are particularly important. It's in follow-up as we wrap this presentation up and that. Is it, this is a peninsula issue. You know, we do have the Montessori, as you mentioned, we have abused, and so these are things we have to take a look at as a feeder pattern because the. The, the movement of, of people from downtown to other areas is certainly occurring because we have to be thoughtful about how we move forward to make sure. And, and this is an, an area as well. We'll, we can talk in Ms. Roberson's district, you know, it goes to how we fund small schools. It's an issue at St. John's High School, for example, you know, it's a similar number of students as you do. So it's not an issue, certainly isolated to the peninsula, but something we see elsewhere too. So thank you for your thoughts.
And if I can just respond.
Sorry. May I, before you respond, may I just add one thing that I missed? We have offered.
Thank you.
enroll dual enrollment courses this year. I know that students attend Early College. And receive their associate's degree, but we do provide. Courses and a curriculum that can lead to our students receiving associate's degrees too. We are part of the National Educational Equity Lab. Which funds dual enrollment courses and this year, excuse me, and last year. We offered many courses. We can offer up to 90 students courses that will help them to enroll in college already with credits earned.
Thank you, Ms. Swinton. I just wanted to say, I, I did remember my question and you actually triggered my memory on that. Particularly because one of my mentees last year was a, one of those dual enrolled students and he's thriving up at Howard right now, Howard University. Shout out to Adam. But then I did want to ask about that scholars program because when it was rolled out for D-20 and D-10. We didn't have a lot of information on it. But where are we right? I know you mentioned we only have one student that's at the scholars program right now. Do you, where are we at? And do we need help with that scholars program and try to push more students into it?
We do need help in that area. What happens is. You have students who are competing for only a few slots. And when you look at the criteria. By the time, when, when you look at the academic criteria along with some of the other test scores. We haven't had a lot of minority students to reach that. Threshold, I should say, because actually. We have more students who could apply, but when you narrow it down to the number of students that can be accepted per year, then. We're kind of at the bottom of the list, even though they qualify for the program.
Thank you for that, Ms. Swinton. Mr. Calhoun, really great question. Dr. Epp, and I think. Leads that work now as the Associate Superintendent. Even when we started it years ago, I was blessed to work alongside Ms. Swinton. We've always had a. A low number of Burke students apply. And so we are looking at the criteria, I believe, is, is the last report I got. At how we do that this coming spring. So, Mrs. Swinton, please look for Dr. Epp to follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swinton, and I just wanted to say that those offerings do. Provide a core for a program that could be an attractive magnet program and that is for many students. But it's still, we just still don't have the numbers to provide basic. As I've mentioned before, for a, a zone school for all different kinds of students. We don't, we just don't have the numbers there and won't. In terms of our, our zoned population. And then in terms of.
I'm an optimist there.
Hearing. In terms of discipline hearings, I mean, I, I have been on the board for over like 10 years. And I've never, until this year, had guns in our hearings. And we've had multiple gun issues this year. So that's alarming.
So I think, I think what do, Mrs. Swinton, is Dr. Coakley, Dr. Coakley and I'll follow up with you, Ms. Swinton, and maybe we'll work with the constituent board. And we'll sit down and have a conversation about, about that, their concerns and how we might work. Dr. Coakley, where are you? There you are. We can work collaboratively with you all to make sure we're responding to your concerns.
I, I would agree with that.
So, thank you so much. And so just for clarification, this, this constituent board chair, when she talks about gun incidents, we're talking about off-campus incidents that's coded as a 700. Off-campus incident. So even though they might not be using like the term 700, it's important for all people to understand that even if our scholars get caught off-campus. With possession of a gun, that is considered a 700 criminal offense that will go before the constituent board. So, so far this school year, we have had some, I wouldn't say fights, because fights would be one-on-one with individuals. But within our building, we've had what we would consider some gang initiations or activities. That leads us to believe that there are some outside community events that are spilling over to the school, not necessarily directly happening within the school that we do have to address. As, as a school district. We've also had some 700 incidents at both our high school and our middle school levels that have required our D-20 constituent board to take action. But all in all, Ms. Swinton is also correct in saying about guns on her campus, that's not necessarily the case. She's had a total of 15 expulsion packets submitted this school year, and Simmons Finkney has had nine submitted, which is very low. And when we talk about 15. We're talking about large incidents that occurred within both of those buildings and not 15 separate incidents. But unfortunately, D-20 has had an increased number of 700 off-campus incidents that either occurred outside of the school day during the summertime. Or within the holiday period.
Thank you, Ev. I think.
Right. So when we talk about, when we talk, I think the years are meshing. So the previous years of incidents that occurred. But as far as the current school year, not so for the Burke. So, and we could talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley.
Absolutely.
That's what we'll do is we'll bring it together, everybody, and make sure we offer some clarity around this. Thank you, Ms. Grabowski.
Dr. Temple?
Um, yes. I'm very fond of Burke High School. And I think we need a big PR campaign for this school. I, I feel like they do not get the recognition that I know they can get. So that's what I want to say. There are a lot of factors that play into all of this. That reduce the enrollment at Burke and we need to be honest about where we are drawing students away from Burke. And why are we doing that? For what reasons? We have to come to grips with this situation. But more importantly, we need to honor the work that Burke is doing. And we need to promote it and, and, and tell its story as it, as it is. It's a beautiful story and there's a lot of really good things going on there. So you, you find, always find me as an advocate for Burke High School. With the weapons, you know, we need to recognize in this community, we have open carry. And that. What happens in our community filters down to our schools. And, you know, that, those are legislative issues that, that need to be taken care of. We're going to be an open carry. Community and state, then we're going to have problems with guns in our schools and we will need metal detectors to help with that. That's all I want to say right now.
Ms. Roberson?
No, Ms. Child, thank you for your report and please do, I understand your um concerns. We have the same issue as Ms. Huggins said on the Sea Islands at St. John's and Baptist Hill. Um, and I'm sure the district will um work on other ways of uh increasing course offerings, maybe through technology. But um, thank you for your detailed report and I look forward to the follow-up from the district.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the issue of weapons has been uh a, addressed, I think. So I don't want to, I don't want to um beat it at a horse there. But I, I am concerned that there seems to be a discrepancy or a, a disconnect between what the constituent board is reporting, whether there's weapons in the school or, or uh, I'm not sure the exact quote, and then what the district is reporting of uh, of off-campus weapons involved issues. So I, I, I would like to hear from the district uh a follow-up to make sure that we are, that we do not have weapons in our schools because that is, that is of, of paramount concern. I'm certain anyone uh would agree. On the topic of, of equal opportunity for students, obviously that is uh an important topic. However, I, I, I think the issue of French class was mentioned. I, I would be interested if, if the district would be willing to poll students in Burke High School and see if they were interested in French class. Uh, obviously, we can't pay a full-time French teacher for one student. Uh, so if, if, if there's not an interest in something like that, uh, then I think the, the proposed solution of opening those kind of classes at neighboring high schools is one that should be considered. Well, I have, sir.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kelly. We'll be glad to follow up this week with the board and the board brief about um weapons, particularly uh in D 20. And in regards to interest, I, I, we can, we can also follow up on that to be more specific about the work Mrs. Haynes and Dr. Epp know go goes on in high schools through school choice when they're determining which courses to offer. Many of our schools, uh, for example, have declined the number of French teachers that they, that they've had, if they had any. So we'll certainly follow up with you all on more details.
Uh, the only question I have, and I think this is more for staff, um, and it's the procedure um and understanding the procedure of a constituent board's request regarding priority seats at a school or attendance zones. I mean, could you walk me through that procedure? Because he's, I'm, I'm hearing it, you know, being discussed as being presented to the board. And I'm trying to figure out exactly what does that mean when you say it's being presented to the board from the constituent board?
So in regards to um how students are accepted and prioritized into magnet schools, that would be a, a policy issue. I know in specifically in regards to the early college and District 20 priority, this uh concept has been considered before with prior boards. And so as Ms. Denny is a resident expert in all things early college, I'm going to ask her, she's certainly more of an expert in it than I am, if she would mind speaking to it briefly.
So very specific to early college, I can share that early college reserves seats for every single middle school in the county. And the number of seats reserved is proportionate to the population countywide of eighth graders who attend each of the middle schools. Uh, so in theory, there are zone seats for D 20 students who attend Simmons Pinkney.
And so what would, what would need to happen is staff, we, we just in complete transparently, transparency, staff has discussed this matter before at the cabinet level and not moved forward that recommendation to the Board of Trustees. But it's something that's on our list to, to take back up in consideration of the constituent board request.
And, and, and what I'm trying to understand is, is when I'm out in the community, if I go to a constituency board and I, I see they're talking about attendance lines or trying to bring kids in, then I'm hearing about, you know, priority seats, and then it seems like we're taking away from Burke when we issue priority seats. And the early college is right in, you know, prime land.
I think that probably goes back, Mr. Grabowski, to the point that Mrs. Waters made, made earlier as well. It, it, it is, and I think the staff in, in, again, very transparently, when staff discussed prioritizing D 20 students for early college, that was one of the primary concerns of staff. Is that it will continue to erode the population zone for Burke. So again, it doesn't mean that we can't reconsider and or won't reconsider at the request of the constituent board. And certainly as a, a consolidated board, it's something that you could add to an agenda yourselves with the appropriate number of members. But um we'll take the matter back up and Mrs. Waters may.
Yeah, I'll recognize you, but please take my time.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to do that. No, I just, I just think it's also really important too that from another angle, I would, I would certainly discourage reserving seats over the more equitable formula for early college because it's the only opportunity for all students to go and get that. Um, we have a very similar situation. It's called academic magnet. Almost no kids from D four go to academic magnet. Um, but that's just how it shakes out. We can't, it's a choice. Students downtown can go to Burke. Um, as Ms. Swinton said, it's a, it's a comprehensive high school. And if more students went to Burke, there would be more course offerings because the number is so small in terms of how many students need to be present to, to, you know, demand a, a course offering. And so it's a choice and we can't, because of the choices of individuals, which is why I've tried to lightly mention, there's a social aspect to this that needs to be addressed. It's not, it's not an issue in the, in the choosing of who gets to go to these schools because we don't need a second academic magnet. That's already inequitable enough.
And, and really, I'm just, I'm assuming that this would come up in, at the strategic ed when the presentation comes through. And at some point, when it would come to some type of action for the board. Okay.
Sure. And we will, again, this is an item. We'll move back into the cabinet for discussion.
Thank you.
And we thank Ms. Child for the, the report from, from the D 20 constituent board.
Thank you for the report. Um, were we able to get uh Ms. Small, Smalls Ford back online?
Monica Smalls from the D nine board is on the line. Monica Smalls from the D nine board is on the line to give the D nine presentation.
Yep.
Ms. Smalls, can you hear us? Ms. Monica Smalls, can you hear us?
Yes, this is Monica Smalls, Prince of Shakora Elementary.
I thought that might be the game. But there are two Monica Smalls.
So the, the Reverend, Reverend Smalls is not on the line?
No.
I don't see Reverend um Smalls Ford. Uh, I think she had, must have had technical issues that prevented her from coming back. So we can add her to the 22nd.
Okay, fine.
Yes, sir. That's okay.
Excellent. Then we will move on to item three. Which is the Acting Superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. I, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll make this brief. It's only five, five slides. I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Grabowski. Um, I don't know if Maggie, if you're able to pull those slides up or. Okay, wonderful. So I wanted, in, in complete transparency, I, I wanted to be able.
Ms. Huggins, can you pull the?
I, I will. Yes, sir.
Everybody here online?
It's hard enough to hear me. We'll go ahead to the second slide. In, in all honesty, I've, I've um been happy to serve to the greatest extent that I, that I can uh in this role alongside a wonderful staff and a dedicated board um for about 50 so days now. And I, I, I thought it would be um important to bring to you an overview of some of the items staff and I have worked on very consciously since last September uh to move forward student achievement. So I've created two really simple slides here alongside a great staff, uh wonderful cabinet to sort of show you in the pillars that we've identified as most important in the district, items that we've prioritized and either been able to accomplish or that we have on our to-do list in the next month. I'm not going to provide a comprehensive explanation of these items, or we would be here till tomorrow this time. And, and that's not in anyone's best interest. So what I'm going to do is quickly go over some of the things we've done, what we have planned as we look forward to the second semester, which launches next week, and ask you to take notes um and, and certainly ask any questions you have here in the interest of the public. But also follow up with me one-on-one or, you know, with chief officers to, to learn more about some of the things that we're excited to share with you tonight that we've done in regards first and foremost to uh student achievement and quality instruction. Many of these things uh go over several different areas. But one of the most important things I think we've done is conducted student data reviews for all feeder pattern schools except for Mount Pleasant District Two. Those were scheduled for tomorrow. But because we've prioritized ESER work, we've moved those student data reviews to, I think, a day the following week. So that opportunity has given every feeder pattern that you serve the opportunity to come and sit with Michelle, me, Jackie, the folks at this table um and other keen district leaders behind me to prioritize what they need. And I'm, I'm blessed to say that we've got a dedicated staff who you'll see here has made some of those things happen already. Um, we've taken uh part in learning walks, our academic council that Michelle sits alongside me, Dr. Jerome Davis, LaShawna Harris, members of our academic team and all of our associate superintendents. We've done learning walks in schools where we've looked at instruction, what does quality instruction look like? What does continuous improvement look like? And how do we as a system help prioritize that? We've launched a North uh Charleston Joint Commission to look at how we improve outcomes specifically for students in District Four as a pilot. See, Mr. Henry Darby is on here for another agenda item, but he's leading that work with Mayor Reggie Burgess. Uh, and we hope to bring more information to you soon about that and how it will prioritize student outcomes and wraparound services for all students in North Charleston. I'll also give you a quick overview of the ELA textbook adoption launch, which Ms. Simmons is leading with Susan Rawlings and her team. We've also, as part of the student data reviews, already pulled together under the leadership of Rich Gordon, a Center for Advanced Studies Accessibility Committee. Um, when we talked earlier about students, particularly in small schools, not having access to resources, we found out as part of the student data reviews that our uh Centers for Advanced Studies are largely underutilized in West Ashley and North Charleston. And so we've already identified ways, second semester, we can make that better. We've launched an OCAP task force around math and math outcomes for students, a system-wide professional development calendar that we haven't had that streamlines and aligns all of our professional development with our core pillars. We also have a task force related to PD. Dr. Williams and Jamie Costner have launched some math pilots to look at how we're doing math. Mrs. Simmons is um thinking thoughtfully about that with Dr. Davis, particularly after we brought together a committee of folks last week to give us feedback on what we start, stop, and um keep. Um, we're also very blessed to, to be progressing forward in our Cognial work as far as district-wide accreditation. And uh within the next month, Dr. Williams, Dr. Coakley, and Dr. Apple Schimer will launch an alternative schools task force to bring to you recommendations about how we serve students best in this school at Liberty Hill Academy. You heard reports from that last month. TPA, um Daniel Jenkins Academy, Clark, et cetera. So again, all of these things have to do with how we serve students and how we increase the productivity of students. K-12, the students with most potential to students in, in some of our um highest potential areas. Our second pillar, high-quality teachers and leaders. Thanks to your leadership and dedication, we've been able to prioritize and answer bonus for students. Uh, excuse me, for teachers, the second of which is forthcoming. We've also launched under the direction of Beverly Pilkey, a Special Education Recruitment and Retention Task Force. Uh, as you know, it's incredibly difficult to recruit and retain special ed teachers. And we're proud that Mrs. Hope Pilkey has led this group uh in two meetings already. So thank you, Beverly, for your leadership. She reports up through Mrs. Simmons. We're also, I'm pleased under the uh leadership of our um uh, uh, our Black Educator Advisory Group. I meet with Tasha Joyner up here, Randy Blake, Jackie Haynes, um, several other members. They've committed to meeting with me monthly and helping me grow as a leader. And under their guidance, um, we have invited 80 senior leaders to courageous conversations about race um professional development, January 30th and 31st, that we think will help improve um our work as teachers and leaders. And I'm looking forward to that, particularly in my growth as a leader. We're also prioritizing the filling of, of interim positions. First, uh, our CAO seated, seated to my right. Our, as part of her appointment, we have numerous vacancies that will be filled, including the executive, uh, the Associate Superintendent of elementary schools and the executive directors that support the elementary school work. Um, we're hopeful that we'll be able to bring forward a CFO recommendation to you in the next month or two. Again, I've talked about the collaboration with the BEAG. Mrs. Joyner is also collaborating with Mr. Brigman in that pipeline development work and how we think differently and collaboratively um and strategically about how we work with HBCUs as we look to um bring more uh teachers and leaders of color to the district. I'm also really excited that we are launching a classified compensation review for school-based um bookkeepers, uh, front office staff, data clerks, as teacher assistants. Uh, Mr. Brigman has planned that. We're excited that that is part of pillar two. Uh, that came a lot of feedback from our student data reviews from principals. It's well overdue and we're excited about bringing forward some recommendations to you in this budget cycle. The, our last pillar, uh, under the direction of Mrs. Lisa Allison, Dr. Shavana Coakley. Again, Mrs. Simmons supports a lot of this work. We're proud to see across our schools, our associates have prioritized restorative practices. And we have a 36% increase this year alone in schools that have taken this on. And all of our schools that were already in that pipeline um have, have prioritized going up a level along that rung of restorative practices. So I want to thank Mrs. Allison and Dr. Coakley for leading that work. We've also increased just in the last few months, the last 60 days, access to mental health through various partners, including the Medical University of South Carolina, Mindscape, Justice Works, and Charleston Hope. Again, Mrs. Allison and her team have been critical alongside Dr. Coakley. Some of the work through Project Prevent and Mrs. Joyner, uh, this increased access to mental health as we look at how we continue these services post ESER. Um, we also, again, in the last 30 to 45 days, have started working specifically with our high schools on comprehensive plans to provide more support, particularly for vaping. As you've noted, our constituent boards have noted the increased numbers in that. Um, I want to thank Mrs. Allison for prioritizing this and working with our high school learning community, um, both Jackie Haynes behind me and Dr. Epp in working with principals. Also, again, uh kaleidoscope expansion, thrilled that we've been able to prioritize funding uh with Mrs. Carlin to support kaleidoscope expansion in all of our schools. We saw it as a deterrent to student achievement and uh to outcomes and for children, but also access for parents. And so second semester, we are prioritizing kaleidoscope expansion in our schools. We're also launching with Dr. Coakley, Community and Parent Round, Round Tables through our Community Engagement Officers um this month. And uh Mrs. Joyner is helping me launch a student round table um to get feedback from our students about what they need. And go quickly to the next slide because this is way too much of me talking. But I'm really committed to inclusive engagement in this role. I believe if we don't know more about what all of our communities need, we can't respond appropriately. We've continued the literacy round table, uh, worked with the Legislative Delegation, as you know, as a whole, but also tried to work individually with Legislative Delegation members, particularly those who've reached out to me for one-on-ones. Representative Gilliard, for example, talked, Representative Pindarvis, et cetera. The Interfaith Round Table, we've continued, worked with the BEA leadership uh team, again, in a more strategic way to optimize the work there. Also appreciate the work of and collaboration with Mrs. Dorothy Jenkins of the NAACP. Grateful for continued relationships with Cajum, um, our Charleston Area Justice Ministry. As always, we've been very thoughtful about our work with our teacher forum and roundtables and our principals cabinet. This semester, we're launching a retired educators advisory group. Some of you have shared names with us. Thank you for that. We'll also reengage in our regional open houses, particularly uh Mrs. Roberson in our smaller areas. Uh, those uh places got canceled back at the beginning of the year, so we're going to reengage there. Aqui Estamos um with Mrs. Lydia Cotton and our Hispanic community. We plan to reengage there. I think the first date is January 18th. We're also launching a bus driver campaign. What we noticed through our. What we noticed through our student data reviews is that we can't get kids to school on time. We can't necessarily get to where we need to get to, and we're driving, I think, 30,000 miles a day, Mr. Brody will tell you. So we are launching with Mrs. Denny, a bus driver campaign to get more folks onboard as bus drivers, so we can get our kids to school and get them there on time. We're also launching a business roundtable and continuing with our school tours. The last speech, which I know you're particularly interested in is its budget readiness. I know it's not one of our pillars, but of course, it's essential to our work as a district. We've launched this allocation committee under the guidance of Don Kennedy down from me. He and Ann Clark, who is a Broad Prize winner, former Superintendent Charlotte Mecklenburg, Woman of the Year, led on Thursday, an allocation committee to review how we resource schools, particularly small schools. Mr. Joyner was there and very vocal, and I'm thankful for that. Well, also, this Wednesday and Thursday, I provided an update for you, but want you to know we're prioritizing this ESER work and our analysis this Wednesday and Thursday with teams of not just central staff folks, but our principals, who served on the allocation committee are coming in to help us figure out how we prioritize continued work around ESER. We've also continued conversations with our teacher compensation task force. I'm grateful to Mr. Calhoun and Mrs. Roberson, who have prioritized meeting. I don't remember when that meeting is right off, Mrs. Roberson, but I think Mrs. Bowles is prioritizing that for the coming weeks. Mr. Brigman, I believe, got dates to her just this week. So again, I want to thank Mrs. Roberson and Mr. Calhoun for being willing to come together with this compensation task force, and Mr. Grabowski and Mrs. Watley as board officers. We're also, what came up at the Audit Finance last week, we heard concerns, and not necessarily concerns, but thoughts, questions, particularly, I think, from you, Mrs. Roberson, about consultative services. By week's end, we already had from Mr. Craven and Mrs. Carlin down from me, all those contracts, and we're going to talk about that and how we do that process at tomorrow's cabinet. So again, I've been doing this work about 50 days, business days, but I wanted you to have an overview of how our strategies and how our thoughts have been aligned with particularly student achievement, wraparound services, and high-quality teachers and leaders, but also how we've engaged with stakeholders, how we intend to engage with stakeholders, and how we plan to work with you around the budget. Two more quick slides here. I could stop and get questions if you prefer. I can quickly overview this ELA adoption timeline for you. Okay, very quickly, I know, I think we've provided you some information. Mrs. Simmons and I forwarded to you rubrics that are used in this process. I also have at your seat this state board approved instructional material titles. Printed that out for you. I think you have it electronically as well. We are committed and want our public to know, our teachers to know, and our board to know. We are committed to doing a really thorough process. Ms. Simmons and I discuss it several times a week on our new ELA adoption series. Mrs. Rawlings, I spoke to her today. Samples that requested are on the way from publishers. You'll be thrilled to know that we actually have a state caravan at Trident Tech. We have representatives from all of our schools, at least one, in many instances, more than one representative from our schools, that will be going to our state caravan at a local IHE, Trident Tech. There are five options. The state has approved for K-5 literacy, three options for middle school literacy. There are two AP Lit, two AP Lang options, and three options for English I, II, III, and IV. Again, you'll see those outlines here on the attached list. I don't know if we have those uploaded in board docs, but we'll make them available to the public. There will be a teacher review period beginning next week. Teachers will use rubrics to review the titles that they have in their schools. Again, we've shared these rubrics with the Board of Trustees. Schools are going to, at the same time, host open houses. I'd like to encourage you as school board members to go to your schools and actually look at these titles. However, if you can't, we'll also hold a community review at the district office on January 30th. Now, our teachers will use rubrics. The community will use a review form. Those things will be filtered to Mrs. Simmons and to Mrs. Rawlings, and they will help us determine whether we need a citizen review panel to come in and provide more feedback on this process. But then we'll hold a textbook adoption committee meeting on the 16th, where school representatives will come in, they will rank order for our staff, I, II, and III, their top options, as far as what the state has provided. And then we will use the feedback from the community. We'll use the feedback from our teachers and our staff to then bring forward to your recommendation. Again, I really hope that you will take advantage of this process. Be present in your schools. Look at these materials, ask questions of teachers. If not, come to the committee review on January 30th, so that you can get a thorough review of what the state has made available to teachers and communities as options. The last two things. Tonight, and you'll notice, those of you and Dr. Temple, I want to thank you again for bringing forward the recommendation of this calendar, student outcome results we bring forward to you. Tonight, we were scheduled to bring forward to you I-ready results. Since we're in the middle of the winter testing window, however, Mrs. Simmons and I discussed it and felt like it'd be untimely to bring forward to you fall results. We're in the middle of the winter window, so we're going to defer that to a later time. And because it's Mrs. Simmons and Dr. Davis will bring forward tonight, Mr. Kelly asked last week, as we met board officers, and he is the cow chair, we'll be bringing forward a recommended course on financial literacy. I wanted to quickly over for you guardrail one, which addresses soft skills and financial literacy. I thought that would be particularly relevant for you as you look over this course in just a bit. And so I think Mr. Rich Gordon owns this guardrail with Dr. Appleshimer. He's here somewhere. I'm going to ask him to very briefly give you an update on where we are in regards to interim guardrail I-A and interim guardrail I-B, with that overarching guardrail being that the superintendent will not allow students to graduate without these soft skills and financial literacy proficiency that are needed for post-secondary success. Rich, I really want to thank you for being a champion for this work and for helping lead it alongside Dr. Epp.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Superintendent Huggins. And really, the glory belongs to our students, the faculty and staff that are working on this good work. To the Board of Trustees this evening, or if you remember, guardrail one is about our students leaving our system and graduating with those skills that are required in addition to the academic and the technical skills. Those are the employability skills in all those high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand jobs that we prepare our scholars for the 21st century global economy. We've divided that, excuse me, the Board of Trustees have divided that into two sections. One is that employability skill, and the second part are personal finance. So as you can see up here, employability skills is based off of the WIN Assessment. The state of South Carolina has identified, has contracted with WIN Learning to offer the WIN Assessment to all of our third-year high school students in Charleston County. So all of our students will take the assessment. Just as a reminder, the WIN Assessment is career-ready math, career-ready reading, career-ready data, and then the employability soft skills section. So it's four sections. And for CCR, for college and career readiness, if a student achieves a Level Three in the math, reading, and data, they are considered a college and career-ready student, and that's our goal three, for all of our students to graduate college and career-ready. This is the fourth section. This is the employability soft skills. And as you can see on this slide, last year in the spring, our juniors, which are now our seniors, almost seven out of 10 of them passed employability soft skills. And what we'd like to do is mirror our graduation rate as we walk it up from 2023 until 2025 to achieve 77%, and then for subsequent years as well. In the schools, we have remediation. We have groups that have teachers and counselors that are working with students. The juniors who didn't pass it last year, they have another opportunity to take the employability assessment. They can take it, they took it this past fall, so some of them have already passed that employability section. And then again, this spring, we might have some opportunities to capture some of those seniors as well, when we administer the test to the current juniors and the third-year scholars in our schools. Any specific questions about the WIN employability assessment before I move on to personal finance? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about how a student gets to the market if they're not there. We sort of set this, what, now, two years ago, but there wasn't a curriculum for it or any sort of learning process. So, I mean, it's great that so many of them have passed it, but for the students who didn't, what is the process of getting them there?
Excellent. So WIN Learning has a treasure trove of online digital content and curriculum. Also, we have career counselors and specialists and instructional support teams at the schools that have that information and have worked with small groups of students on those skills that are required to pass. So providing remediation, sometimes it's during lunch, sometimes it's during their CTE courses. You'll see that, too. We have thousands of students that are taking career and technical education courses in Charleston County. Those skills that are required to pass this are the first four of five standards in every CTE course. So students who take CTE classes are getting this training, and they're getting these knowledge and skills and abilities to perform well on this as well. For those that are not, we identify them. This past fall, we've met with all the principals around Charleston County, and we know they know who those students are that have not passed this test, and they are being purposeful and intentional in helping them to be successful on this exam.
Okay, I have two more questions. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Waters, if I could just ask, isn't this going to be covered on item... 4C?
Mr. Grabowski, thank you for that question. Mrs. Simmons and Dr. Davis will actually review the course, but not necessarily the tools. So if it's okay, Mr. Ford might be able to provide a few more details, just to help. I want to make sure you all understand what the foundation, the course will lay and how we're measuring, so you know the importance of it.
Is that regarding to personal finance? No, or your employability soft skills?
Yeah, this is a separate...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so two questions.
Yes.
How many students actually took this? Was it just the students in CTE, or was it all?
No, ma'am. All third-year students are provided, are administered this exam. And that's what's wonderful about this opportunity, is that all students, regardless of what school you're in, if you're a third-year student, it's administered to all third-year students in Charleston County.
Okay, so then that brings me to my third question.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, it sounds really good. I mean, it sounds like the program is really good in terms of laying out, I guess, what resources students can pull to them to learn these things. But it seemed, it would seem to me that the goal of K-12 education would be to make one employable, and that there would be skills along the way that they should be picking up from the time that they enter school. And so I'm curious to know, and I don't have to know today, but like, what are, what is the rubric? Like, what are the standards and how are we making sure they're actually meeting them way before? I think about things like a Chief Charleston that we don't get to hear a lot about, and I know it's, you know, relatively new getting off the ground, but there's supposed to be exposure from elementary levels and inclusion of the parents, so they understand where kids are going, so that they have a different frame of mind when they approach the academic process. And so I'm just wondering if, if the program, as great as it sounds, is also like a rush-through course for something they should have been getting all along?
Amen, Miss Waters. Career and technology education and career readiness is a K-12 mission of Charleston County School District. It is our literacy goal, K through five. It is our numeracy in eighth-grade students taking Algebra I and being successful, and it's also about college and career readiness. Since students entered the system, our teachers work tirelessly on meeting those state standards, which are all aligned. So as they matriculate from elementary to middle to high school, the standards, they build on top of each other, and using the differentiated curriculum and scaffolding techniques, when the students are 10th and 11th graders, we believe we put them in a favored position, in a positive posture, to be successful on this exam. It's all baked in, you know, and we can talk through with the elementary and middle school. I know for a fact, observing and doing learning walks through our high school classes, that our teachers are hitting these standards. I know they're doing them in the CTE courses and in the English and the math and science and social studies, because to achieve the Level Three you need for the work-ready math, reading, and data, you need some of those foundational skills. And if you're Level Three, employers know that you have basic foundational skills to be successful for a student that graduates from high school. And that's why I say it has identified Level Three as the level to be career-ready. Yes, ma'am. And then the next slide?
Mr. Grabowski, before he, Mr. Grabowski, before he moves forward, I have a question right along the lines of what Ms. Waters was just asking him about.
Go ahead, Ms. Watley.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, I'm going to sort of ask a very similar question as what Ms. Waters did. I'm just going to ask it in a different way. So you mentioned that the administrators that are working with the students, they have access to the information, and they know the scoring and where the child needs to improve. But on the other side of that, is anybody dialoguing with the child on their test scores, especially those that need to improve? And if so, what sort of counseling is being made available to them in order to encourage them to push a little harder and to get their scores up?
Excellent question, Ms. Watley. Yes, ma'am. So I know at the, from the jump, yes, principals do know the scores from the third-year students after they take the WIN Assessment. Typically, when I go around from school to school and I speak with principals and assistant principals and counselors, they put together teams of adults that are then, that then are assigned to substitute students to meet with them. I know for a fact, we have career specialists on our CTE support team that go out to Stoll, to West Ashley High School, to Wando High School, and are working one-on-one and in small groups with students who have not been successful on any of the sections on the WIN, in addition to the employability soft skills. Furthermore, as seniors, when they have their IGP in the fall, we know that those students are identified as college and career-ready or not. And if they're not, then they haven't passed that WIN Assessment from the previous year. The counselor is aware of that, and if there's some remediation or action that can be taken, they'll do so at their time. They'll submit a referral or figure out another way for that student to be college and/or career-ready. But we, and there are other ways and other implementations and strategies that we're using. Those are the first two that come to mind that I've seen personally as I'm walking around to the secondary schools.
Thank you. And Mrs. Watley, that IGP, that graduation plan process, that individual graduation plan process, it actually begins in the middle school. And so, you know, those, you can identify the strengths and areas of growth and where students have, might focus more of their time, beginning then, and as you think about their trajectory in high school. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for that overview.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Grabowski?
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, I also wanted to state that when they take that WIN test, parents also get a copy of the results from it. And when you go to those IGP meetings with the guidance counselor, they also explain to the parents, as well as the student, where their strengths are and where their limitations are as well.
Dr. Temple?
Yes, I was just curious, do these scores appear on a student's diploma, the employability score that they get?
No, ma'am, but the student receives a certificate that said that they have earned the employability soft skill credential. They can put that information on their resume or on their college application, or, and/or when they apply for a job, when they transition out of high school, they can certainly inform their employer that they have met the minimum requirements for whatever that job that is they're applying for, and that certification proves it based off of the state of South Carolina.
All right, and so then the second question I have is, have you received any feedback from employers saying, when they see what this employability skill is, are the employers being satisfied that our, because we hear so much, kids can't read, they can't do math. So are employers giving us feedback that, yes, in fact, we think we're making a difference and we're getting better employers?
So, so three things. So one is, we've just started doing the WIN last year, so the conversation has to broaden. So some employers, you know, full transparency, some employers know about the WIN, most are still learning about the WIN. There was more familiarity with work keys. Remember, silver and bronze and gold and platinum, but this is making its way through the chambers of commerce at the state level and at the local levels as well. Second, when we met with the HR executives, they said the number-one thing they're looking for are these employability soft skills. If you, Rich, we'll teach them how to swing a hammer or turn a wrench or create a... If you, Rich, we'll teach them how to swing a hammer or turn a wrench or, or, or create a Excel spreadsheet. But if you can teach them how to show up to work on time, dress appropriately, and treat others with respect, that's what we're looking for. And so, they know that, I, we know that they want that, and they're looking for that as well.
Okay, and then the other question, you don't have to battle it off now, but if you could send, you know, the soft skills sounds like another acronym, so, um, it would be nice to see. What is this list of soft skills you're talking about?
Absolutely, and it's listed, it's, um, explicit and, um, divided by standards and substandards, and it's all on the Win Learning website, and we can provide that to you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kelly or Mr. Calhoun, do you have any questions?
I do not have anything to add, Keith. Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
When it could you, do you want to do person, last slide?
Yes, ma'am. And then finally, the, the financial literacy. So, um, the board had a goal to increase the lev, the successful financial literacy competency of our students. Um, I, the, the state of South Carolina must have heard the Board of Trustees loud and clear, because right after the Board of Trustees came up with that goal, the state of South Carolina has now made it a graduation requirement that all students who graduate by 2027 have completed a financial literacy course. So, again, Charleston County School District leads the, is leading, um, not just probably the state, but also the nation and our financial literacy spearhead. Um, so, we've, have already started this. Um, we've had teachers that have been trained last year, um, through the Education and Business Summit in Greenville by our state educators. Uh, they're in our classrooms now. We have thousands of students that are taking personal finance. This year's ninth graders, that's the first class that has to have personal finance in order to receive a South Carolina high school diploma. So, our principals and our counselors and our teachers are actively engaging that effort as we speak, and we'll be ramping that up as we go into the future. Uh, there is no doubt that we're going to meet the board's intent for this guardrail. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since our legislature agrees with us, how much funding are they giving us for this program?
Yeah.
Then I think we should ask. Ask them for it.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we, we will prioritize that, um, Mrs. McKinney, but, but we certainly do see the value in it.
Either that or they can give us copyright money for coming up with the idea, whichever.
And Mrs. Simmons, members of Mrs. Simmons' team, in, in just a bit, will overview the, the course that we're gonna ask you to approve, and that's why we included this guardrail in tonight's superintendent's report. So, that's all, Mr. Kobowski, that I have. I'm, I'm certainly open to any questions anyone might have, and, um...
Ms. Waters?
Just one quick comment, because we don't ever get an opportunity to hear from or thank the students. It was actually the students themselves who asked for this to be, um, a guardrail. They were overwhelmingly concerned with wanting to be able to get a job, know how to apply for an apartment and all of the things, when we went out and engaged them. So, just want to say the kids, for once, actually spoke and, and got what they asked for.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr., that's all I have, Mr. Kobowski. Uh, again, I'm happy to entertain any questions you all may have about what we've done the last fifty, fiftieth days, the ELA adoption timeline, if you need any more details, and/or I think most of the questions regarding guardrail one have been asked, but anything else, I'm opening it for you.
And, and I'd ask all of our, my fellow board members if we can really move this along considering what we have in front of us, that we always have the opportunity. I mean, I know with talking to Ms. Huggins, that, as you always answers, but anyway, uh, Ms. Watley?
No further questions from me. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
No, sir, I have no questions.
Ms. McKinney? Ms. Roberson? Dr. Temple?
Um, where are we with the Cognia process? How close are we to wrapping this up?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Simmons to answer that for you, Dr. Temple.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. We intend, um, to wrap the process up in spring. And so, we've done the heavy work of getting the input from various stakeholders, but, um, this spring, under the direction of Ms. Roberts, Kathy Gier, I believe, is also in the audience, um, we will have the actual visit from Cognia this spring. And so, we are on schedule, and the closer we get to, um, summarizing this, um, process, we'll advise the board.
Can you, thank you so much, Ms. Simmons, for that thorough response. You may remember that as part of the process, Dr. Harrison shared with you all that he will engage with some board members around this. So, we'll keep you updated as we learn more.
We will need some board participation, um, in terms of being interviewed. Can you guys hear me okay?
Um, and then the second thing, um, is, um, you've listed a lot of advisory kinds of committees. It would be, um, informative to us as board members to know who, who is serving on those, um, committees. And, um, you know, we want to be sure that we have representation from across the county.
That's really great point, Dr. Temple. We'll put those lists together for you and share them with you. Thank you.
Ms. Waters? Ms. Bailey?
No questions.
I have no questions. Thank you very much. Wonderful report.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to item four A. What I, what I'd like to do is, is recommend a, a process on how, because what we have before the board is a motion to advance to the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting, uh, for consideration, the continuous improvement plans. I know this is a time-sensitive issue. I also know that it's a very long, detailed report. So, I'm gonna make a, a, a recommendation as to the process, as to how to handle this, and that what we would do is ask staff to give their report, and then I would ask all of the board members to ask their questions, and that would give staff the opportunity to research the answers and then respond to the board members. You know, within a, a timeframe you can think about right now as you do your report, to make sure that the board is happy with having that information if we're going to consider this for the board meeting. Yeah, and put it in board docs.
We're happy to do that, Mr. Kobowski, and I want to thank several of you who have had a chance. I know time has been limited with the new year to take a look at these plans and send some questions our way, but, um, our associate superintendents have worked very collaboratively with many of the principals on the screen who were here just to listen to your questions tonight, if you had them, along with, so I think I saw John Whitman and, and maybe Steve Larson here, um, uh, just to listen to any questions you might have tonight. And we certainly will take them under advisement. Um, Mrs. Simmons, uh, has worked with the associates, John Cobb's office of our federal programs, to put these plans together. They've already gotten feedback once, I believe, from the state, and have received preliminary approval on the plans. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Simmons and her team and ask for any input from the associates as appropriate.
And if, I just want to make sure with my fellow board members that they don't have any objections to this process. And, you know, with that, if there are no, hearing no objections, then we will move forward and handle the motion at the end. Yes, and each board member will be allowed to ask all their questions, to make sure that it's on the record and that the staff has something to review. Anyway, Ms. Huggins?
Okay.
Ms. Simmons?
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Uh, so, these continuous improvement plans are a part of the state's larger school improvement designation program. And so, as Ms. Huggins alluded to a few moments ago, we did review the plans with the State Department, received a cursory preliminary, um, approval. They gave us feedback so that our principals can then revise and turnkey the information in tandem and concert with the associate superintendents lending support. And so, today, I asked John Cobb, who is our liaison for school improvement, to just give us a, a real high-level timeline overview of where we are with this particular process. Mr. Cobb?
Good evening, Mr. Kobowski and the board members. Uh, we're sharing with you sixteen school-based continuous improvement plans. The, uh, principals have vetted these plans with their staff and notified the community of the plans, and they're rating as underperforming schools. In addition, I have checked with the State Department, these plans. First of all, when you are agreeing to approve these plans, you're saying that the activities are allowable. You're saying that it's in line with, uh, in part with the school renewal plan for each school. And you're also saying that these activities that the, uh, schools have in their plan support student achievement as according to our guardrails. And I'll, so therefore, we have sixteen, again, sixteen schools. Uh, twelve of the schools are continuous improvement schools in the way of, uh, CSI are priority schools. And we have the principals are online, and they're here to, to answer any questions with this. Do you have any questions for me?
And, and I think that's important to understand, that I'm sure a lot of these questions are gonna be directed to specific schools. So, I would ask that the, that the staff, you know, direct any of these specific questions that are made to the principals. Principals can hear the questions as they're directed, and I would ask, you know, the board members to make it very clear, you know, as to why the question's being asked.
I would also like to add one more thing, Mr. Kobowski, that, um, in these plans, we have to realize there are multiple funding sources, and, um, Ms. McKinney has asked several questions, dealing with funding sources, dealing with, uh, details, and those details are actually put into the document when I uploaded to the State Department. So, therefore, the continuous improvement plans themselves are like a highlight, and they are an, an addendum or attachment that goes along in GEMS where the details are located for how much money is being spent, which funding source is being used. Not all of the schools are, um, receiving additional funds, so they're multiple funding source.
So, Dr. Cobb, so essentially, you're saying that, um, we, we are looking at a high-level summary, um, and this is not the inclusive plan? So, some of the questions that we may have actually could be answered in the bigger plan?
In the bigger plan, and then the details are submitted to the state, because the details actually go to, um, it's uploaded into GEMS.
Okay, so, that's, I think our questions will probably be null and void, because we don't have all the answer. Like, I, I don't, um, I, I'm not gonna sit here and ask each principal, um, questions about their plans. I, I do understand the continuous, um, improvement plan process. I do understand that the money's not coming out of our GOF. It's coming from the state and federal government because of the school designation. Um, the only thing that I would say from what I reviewed, um, in this summary, that it seems like, um, the thirty, sixty, ninety-day part, some of the, um, some of them were incomplete. I didn't see any information, but again, that may be, oh, in the other side. I don't know. But if it's not, my only concern would be, um, the monitoring plan, um, the thirty, sixty, ninety day.
Thirty, sixty, ninety day, as you, as you mentioned, pretty much what's happening with that is the schools that are receiving funds, they haven't received funds yet, so there's nothing for them to spend to monitor for the thirty, sixty, ninety days. And some of them, they're saying, this is what we'd, what we will be doing to monitor. Um, and remember, the schools that are designated, um, to receive funds, it's, they're in a three-year cycle. We have four schools that are not in that three-year cycle, and they're using the, uh, special revenue funds that's available to them.
So, that's why they, some of those schools already have, um, thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan? Because they are in this cycle already?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think it's important that, you know, some of these questions can be, you know, answered now as to the process, like what Ms. Roberson just brought up. So, I think that to understand what we're actually looking at, and then, you know, there may be further review down the road, and these are just the initial, you know, reports, is helpful. But I would ask the board members if the questions can be answered in board docs, that they would, you know, just say, these can. But obviously, if there's a process question like which was just asked, I think it does need to be answered tonight so that we know what we are looking at.
And surely, Ms. Roberson, if you have questions about any specific schools and their thirty, sixty, ninety, and to see where they are, we can provide you that feedback. If you want to email us those schools, we're happy to provide you specific feedback.
So, we'll start with Ms. McKinney.
So, um, so that I understand the numbers, special funding is set aside for the improvement plans from the state and federal government because of the designation of the schools. Does it come through our budget, or, or does it, is it separated? I mean, are their expenses part of our budget to balance, or is it separate?
For, it's separate. The school, the funding that you're talking about, special revenue, which is federal money that comes in.
Okay.
And these for our priority schools, our, um, continuous improvement schools. And there are also some TSI, ATS I schools in there. So, you're talking twelve of the sixteen schools. Four of those schools, they are not designated CSI or priority, so they are using their other special revenue funds.
So, we don't need to worry about a budget line item? Okay, thank you. Um, uh, and then I had the, that one question I asked about, and it's so wonderful. The Ron Clark House Initiative is so successful in so many schools. And my question was, the penny pincher that I am, the, the schools that have had great success with it, they cannot train other schools. We need to pay, and I know there's nothing like firsthand experience or these great workshops, but the dollar sign is like that. So, can we not share success stories within our district?
I will say that it's, I'm not aware of the Ron Clark having a train-to-train-a-model. Not that familiar, but, uh, we do have several schools that have gone through the training. They may be able to have discussion, but I'm not aware of them having that train-to-train-a-model. Maybe.
Ms. McKinney, I think that initial experience is important for, for, for teachers and school leaders. I think that there are multiple other opportunities, though, that some schools take part in, that are more experts and far along in the process, that they can share. And I know some of our schools have shared in that process, and so, we will be thoughtful about how we, how we send people. I do think that initial, that going there and seeing for that initial is, is important, it means.
It's like a pep rally. It's valuable.
Yes. Would you have anything to add? She said no. Not at this time, but we'll, we'll follow up with you on the, the tier training. And like John said, Mr. Cobb, um, I, I don't believe there is a train-to-train-a-model. I concur with that.
My, my other question is, so that we do not micromanage and we do our job, and to follow up with Ms. Roberson and her question, it's not our job to look line per line and question the amount of money?
No.
That's correct?
No, ma'am. Really, that's our job, and Mr. Cobb and the associate superintendents have, have worked collaboratively to ensure that, along with Mrs. Simmons and other members of our team, to ensure that these plans meet the guidelines. Really, what's more important, and I think most of you as practitioners know, it's what's actually going on day-to-day. And Dr. Williams and I had a lengthy conversation about this on Saturday morning. Um, you know, what's most important is what the associates and principals are doing in that continuous improvement cycle, boots on the ground, PLC meetings, learning walks, giving feedback to teachers. Of course, you've got to have a plan, because everybody needs a roadmap. Um, but what's most important is that you see that the structure's there and trust that we've given it appropriate oversight, wouldn't you think, Simmons? And that our leaders then know what to do next, Ms. Simmons?
And it's also, I think, noteworthy that these plans are part of their larger school improvement plans, school renewal plans, and so, these aren't isolated, uh, in nature. They're just an extension of the work they've already built out.
Okay. Thank you. If I had just known this earlier.
Yes, that we appreciate.
But that's okay. My calculator is burnt now.
We appreciated, we appreciated your lengthy questions, Ms. McKinney.
Ms. McKinney, I also appreciate it because you helped me out, because there was some details that I had to flesh out in order to put in this thing.
Ms. Waters? Ms. Roberson, do you want to continue? Do you have any further questions with that? Mr. Dr. Temple?
Um, yes, I had a few questions. Um, I noticed that on these, um, plans, the, the amounts of money were just so different from school to school. So, um, how, how is the amount of money determined? Is it that the school is told they have so much money, and then they plan activities? Or they come up with the activities and then they budget it? But how does that work?
The state has a formula for, um, allowability and allowing, um, allocations to each school based on school size and the hundred-and-thirty-fifth day count. So, it does have a formula for CSIs and a formula for priority schools.
Okay, and I noticed that in one of the, um, and I don't want to call it the school, but one of the schools had no money budgeted, and I was like, how are they gonna implement their activities?
Because that school was... Because that school was doesn't have a special designation as a priority or CSI school. However, they uh had the underperforming title. So that school is strategically using the funds that they have allowed to them, which are Title I funds. Um and then GOF and district funds to uh make a difference for their students.
And you're confident that they have the resources within those other budgets to accomplish the strategies they're uh they've identified?
I am confident that as they work with their le- level leaders and their school team and pretty much sticking with the guards and guardrails that they are going to make a difference for their kids.
Okay.
Um, one of those schools, I must add, is St. James Santin, which you were discussing earlier. Um, not to call them out, but there's a school that had to do with uh with not having enough students in the subgroup, so.
Yeah, that was my concern. Um, that's not the school that I was concerned about. I'll I'll let you know which one it was.
Thank you.
Um, so were there any restrictions in terms of um services and professional development that the schools could request?
The requirement had to do with federal um allowability. The programs had to be um allowable and and consistent with Title I and federal spending.
Um, and this is a comment, this is how I feel about it. Um, I noticed that in some of the school plans, they were talking about having um like mo- it sounded like motivational speakers come in. And I have a lot of concern about that because it's a one and done and it, you know, motivates somebody for, you know, maybe a few hours. But it doesn't linger and doesn't seem like a a strategy that results in in deep, deep change. So uh I I would caution um where I've noticed that that I don't think that that's good practice. Um, and the other thing, I and maybe this is where this happens because these are streamlined plans. Um, so beside the principal, you know, who from central staff uh is working with um these schools to be responsible for securing and overseeing that the schools are getting the training curriculum, professional development, instructional materials, et cetera, that um the schools need because some of it looks like things the school could purchase themselves. But it also looks like they are going to need resources from within the district. So, you know, none of these plans that we received were, had any signatures of who was accountable for um for overseeing other than I would assume the the principal.
Yeah, but we have the principal and also these plans were shared with their level leaders and their support teams within uh district. So level leaders have had multiple opportunity to meet with the principals. And these plans were essentially developed by the school with that principal's team. Whether it's a school improvement council, whether it's their um leadership team or whether it's their uh level leaders.
So Dr. Temple, I appreciate that response, John. The associate superintendents inevitably, um Joe, Jennifer, Epp and Jackie, you know, but the way we our system is working moving forward is everybody is gonna is or will be held accountable for the same student outcomes. So inevitably, I'm held responsible for how students achieve literacy, math, college and career readiness. And then my direct reports, Ms. Simmons, Ms. Carlin, every Joe, Jennifer, all these folks, they're they're all held accountable. Just like the principals are held accountable for their individual school results based on reading, math and college and career. Just like teachers, SLOs are built so that the system supports it, supports the goals of the district. And so um Ms. Simmons is held accountable, just like Dr. Williams is held accountable for or Dr. F is held accountable for stall, Steve Larson's outcomes, just like he is. And so um it doesn't benefit Dr. Apple Schammer not to know about Mr. Larson's plan to work with him to support it. And then for Dr. Apple Schammer in our academic council meeting seat to work across the system collaboratively to ensure that Mr. Larson has the resources that he needs. And that's why then I sit down in the still school data reviews to look at feeder pattern systems to make sure people have what they need. So we're all reviewing the plans and have looked at the plans and I'm thankful for John, who's really been boots on the ground with the associates, looking at the plan. I don't know, Steve, uh you're here, John, Adam is here, do you want to come up and say anything?
Real quickly, you're on the two minutes, start two minutes there for Steve, Stephanie.
Steve?
Actually, I really appreciate how um Superintendent Huggins uh described it. We know very well uh what we're held accountable to, that the uh report card is very clear. In high schools, it's EOCs, it's college and career, climate, graduation rate. Um, and for our school in particular, it's performance for multilingual students. So with that, we use all of the resources that we have, the GOF. Um, I have about one point seven million dollars in Title I funds. Uh, and then special revenues like this, and then some local funds that I'm able to put together to align it to a plan to address those um those data points uh that are faltering. Uh, to be one of these schools, you have to have uh a problem in one of those data sets. So you design the this school improvement plan around those particular problems. Just to give you an idea of the scale of this particular uh funding source, um our allocation is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our Title I is one point seven million dollars. So uh a staff member in general, fully loaded with benefits is over a hundred thousand dollars. So you'll see in particular in our plan that it doesn't fund all that much. It's nice, uh it'll give a boost to certain things, uh like I'm college and career specialist that will focus on that. But primarily, it's it's a a little bit of dollars with some highly intentional planning that goes around it to supplement your school renewal plan, your Title I plan, and then your strategic plan that pulls it all together.
Steve, that's a great explanation, John Lyman. I don't know if you want to add anything, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I did.
On that, you heard the report, speak on it. Um, good evening, everyone, protocol has already been established. But I was a school that was on there because of below average status, I'm not a CSI score or priority school. So it probably was my report that you was talking about with some of the funding not being there, I'm not sure. Um, but I use Title I funding and ESR funded to supplement some things in the plan. Um, of course, I had three areas that I was looking at. One was the equity, which was literacy for K to two, because historically AC Cochran has um failed in literacy. Like our kindergarten, our kindergarten readiness assessment, when I got there was nineteen point three. So kids coming to school at nineteen point three percent ready for kindergarten, that's already setting up students for failure. Um, so with that, I've been working with the early learning department, it's Foxworth. Um, just trying to address those shortcomings and uh with those K to two teachers, again, making sure we're in the letters training, making sure we have those resources, our instructional coach, we've been targeted with the K to two population. Because if we don't get K to two under control, we're going to suffer in three to five. And those kids are just moving. Historically, A C Cochran has been under thirty percent. When I got there um in twenty twenty one, twenty two school year, um of course, we didn't get ratings because of COVID. But um the first time, I think we were nineteen point three percent. And when we got our ratings for SC ready, this year we were twenty eight point six percent. So we're moving in the right direction, but historically, we've been under thirty percent, that's a problem. So again, trying to address that K to two that was one of the focus in the co- um continuous improvement plan, as well as looking at math. Um, we were twenty two point seven percent in math and I go, of course, thank you guys for adding that instructional coach because I was paying for an instructional coach out of my Title I budget when I got there. I'm like, why don't we have an instructional coach? It didn't make sense to me, I was a math teacher, I'm like, we need a instructional coach, a math coach. We had an instructional coach for reading, but she was also trying to support the school with math um and um science, which was killing her. I'm like, no, we need, I was a math teacher, so I was a little biased, I'm like, we're going to find a math coach. So I found money in Title I, made some cuts and I found to get a, um but with the additional math coach that we were granted, I'm I was able to do a K to two focus with math and then the three to five focus with math. So I'm excited to see where we go this year with data because we've been intentional with walkthroughs and supports. And also with our three to five, we were able to departmentalize, they haven't been departmentalized in fourth and fifth grade. So I'm looking forward to, again, the results from departmentalize. Because when you're departmentalized, you can focus more on one subject and that you have passion for such as reading or math. And we can see better outcomes because those teachers are planning. And then the last one was dealing with our multilingual learners um in the plan. Of course, we outperformed the district and the state with fifty six percent of our students meeting projected proficiency. But I do have a problem, we have two hundred and eighteen students, um ML, ML students. But we only have two ML, MLSs providing support. So that's like one oh nine person, um and that's not equitable at all. So just looking at the resources, uh we have to do a better job because we have a hundred, I mean, a hundred and nine students with one MLS support. And that's that's really not fair. But again, it goes back to the teachers who's been working with our students. And of course, we've been doing a lot of stuff with Spanish, my school is highly Portuguese. Uh, so it's kind of, they're not the same, a lot of times people think they are, but they are totally different. So again, that communication badge, but our teachers are rocking that. Like I said, last year, data that we outperformed the the state and the district with fifty percent of our students meeting that projected proficiency. But again, with all the data points, we're still not where we need to be. But I I do see great things for our school. Um, again, as we push with literacy, especially, like I said, last year, we had, we saw a nine point three percent increase. And I'm looking forward to see more as we continue to work with EL, ELCs, um our learning walks and even our extended learning walks with district supports. And um just being on one page again, then I'm excited to see what we do in math again, having those two math coaches, one paid for outside of one. Then one was gifted with GOF so that we can do that K to two and three to five focus. And again, just, I'm looking at how we can move again, continue to work with our ML learners, even though we have limited resources.
Thank you so much. Because I um really was curious about, you know, how you went about prioritizing which data sets you were going to work on. And in full transparency, I really liked your plan, as I did really like this the stall plan as well.
Right.
Well, those are two great folks to show off in person, look at there. But in our associate superintendent, Dr. Temple, and I saw I'll say about this. Our associate superintendents prioritize at the beginning of the year when they sit down and do their PDEP goals with principals. They take a look at those student groups and where students need the most support in these schools, whether it's um students of poverty, PIPs is what we call them, whether it's MLL students, multilingual learners, whereas African American, um black or brown students. And and so we try to make sure all those pieces are connected. You heard Steve reference like four or five different plan hunts. We it doesn't do us any good to have four or five different plans. The plan needs to be very similar and based on the same goals for students. So thank you for the thought.
Yeah, and I just want to be sure that, you know, everybody does know the plan because there's a lot of parts and pieces here. So, I mean, I understand, you know, Ms. Simmons is the overseer, but she can't look at details of all these plans. It it's got to really um siphon down to um all of all of the people who are involved in curriculum instruction and so on. And then the last question I have is, how soon um will the schools be able to work on these plans uh and get this money to be doing um the work that they need to do?
Well, we're trying to get the UO to approve the plan so I can submit it uh by the twenty sixth of uh January.
And then how long does it, is this something that will happen the next school year? Or can schools start accessing these funds?
For the schools that have been identified, the money is waiting for the approval.
Okay.
Yes.
We need to hurry.
Ms. Bailey, do you have any questions?
Yes, um I I did all what Ms. McKinney and Ms. Temple said, but I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly. Um, what determines the priority of funding for these schools um involving involving their um strategic plans for improvement? I mean, I understand that it doesn't directly affect our budget. But what specifically determines the factor of how much money each one of these schools get to help the um the needs in that particular school?
The ratings are determined by the report card rating from the State Department, that's how the schools are identified. And as far as the allocation is based on the schools' uh hundred and thirty fifth, hundred and thirty fifth day count.
Any further questions?
No, no.
Mr. Kelly?
No, sir, I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Watley?
Um, well, I think Dr. Temple may have taken, I was going to ask in regards to uh accountability and oversight as well. I heard a lot about the plan and I do agree, plans are great to keep you on track. But just um I was going to ask more specifically about um what the process for oversight and accountability is. But I I think that may have been answered, um unless there's anything in additional anybody would like to add.
No, Ms. Watley, in essence, our associate superintendents and the level leaders who work alongside the associate superintendents are accountable and responsible for helping to monitor um the plans and make adjustments. We don't expect the plans to be static or to sit on a shelf. We expect them to make adjustments and monitor um as the school year progresses. If there are no other board member questions about this particular item, I did want to take a moment just to think, a lot of hands touched.
Let me just see if if Mr. Calhoun, are you on the line? He's gone.
Forgot it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Simmons.
Um, a lot of hands in the district office influenced, impacted, supported this work. So I just want to thank the associate superintendents and level leaders, Buffy Roberts, helping us organize and compile everything in tandem with John Cobb. And so to your point, uh, Dr. Temple, I certainly can't read here the plans. I certainly can't see the details in all of this, it's a team effort. So thank you for your your questions.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, is it?
I I I'm, she she mentioned Dr. Temple, but I'm wondering if maybe she meant me. But anyway, yes, uh, thank you for um answering.
I absolutely meant you, Ms. Watley, thank you.
No problem, thank you very much. You you actually um touched on um a little bit more detail, so thank you.
Let me just finally, final comment, thank you all from the board. Um, I believe that you, Ms. Huggins, sent us this um the letter in October sometime. Um, and so um in order to get a letter in October, have the principals to put plans together, meet with the community, um send it off to the State Department, get a preliminary review. Thank you all for everything that you've done, um because that's a lot of work in a short amount of time.
So the issue before the board is a motion to advance to the January twenty second, twenty twenty four board meeting for consideration. The continuous improvement plans is submitted. Do you have a second?
Second, so move.
So it's moved by Ms. Bailey, seconded by uh Dr. Temple. So taking it to vote, I would please ask everybody to vote, read your vote and cast your vote.
I accidentally in trying to reopen my board docs, I accidentally exited out, so I'll voice vote. Um, I vote aye.
Thank you.
This is Courtney, I vote yea.
Mr. Grabowski?
Go ahead.
Did you hear me? I voted yea, I didn't know if you heard.
Yes, Ms. Water, we we have you registered, thank you.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Moving on to item four B, the school identification number. For the board is a motion to advance to the January twenty second, twenty twenty four board meeting for consideration to approve the acknowledgement here to that Meeting Street Elementary Public Schools of Innovation are in fact two distinct campuses, schools, and thus replace the previous single school identification number one zero zero one two zero zero and be acknowledged as Meeting Streets at Brentwood and Meeting Street at Burns with two distinct new school identification numbers upon acknowledgement of the South Carolina Department of Education slash State Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Ms. Huggins.
Very, very quickly, this is a simple administrative request today regarding the first public school of innovation that was started in. the first public school of innovation that was started in 2014 under a partnership between Main Street Schools and CCSD under the leadership of Dr. Nancy McGinnly. It was, we're not here today to talk about whether, whether necessarily you approve the partnership, whether you like the partnership. But currently, the partnership looks like two campuses serving with one, we used to call them Miss Roberson beds codes. Mrs. McKinney, our educators here, they're now S, uh, school identification numbers, SIDNs. So we, we have two campuses operating under one. Prior in South Carolina, there was, districts could only have one school of innovation. So in 2016, when Dr. Postleway expanded the partnership to include Burns, it started with Brentwood under the leadership again of Nancy McGinnly, expanded to Burns in 2016. We, we then had two, two campuses operating under one beds code. So in 2026, the Meeting Street Public Partnership, Public Private Partnership will come back up for renewal and will come to the board for consideration at that point for a continued partnership. As of right now, however, it, this is coming forward as a staff request. So we can look at outcomes at both sides and determine the progress of students. Because it's Charleston County School District students that Meeting Street at Burns and Meeting Street at Brentwood are serving. Over the course of the last nearly 10 years, the Meeting Street partnership has garnered about $10 million in facility enhancements. They've developed a health clinic and, and those sorts of things. But again, we, we want to more closely examine how both schools are performing. Burns grew the, the original MOU. We took an internal look at the, our memory, minimum of understanding. With Burns, it was only supposed to be a pre-K through five school. It grew to grade seven. So we're working to, over time, to whittle that back down to what we originally agreed, which was a pre-K through five. And Brentwood is a pre-K through grade eight with about 100, excuse me, about 800 students. So again, the charter renewal will come up in 2026. We're, we're thankful for the, for the partnership. Our discussion here tonight, though, is simply an administrative task to, to appeal to the State Department of Education for two independent SIDNs so that we can work to address operational issues, look at more closely at student achievement on both campuses and work with that family to make sure our students are best served. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Buffy Roberts is, and Mrs. Simmons' team has helped support this through her office. Do you have anything to add, Buffy, that I might have left off?
I think you did a beautiful job explaining the process. We're really asking, or they're really asking for two beds codes. SID and identification numbers.
Ms. Watley, do you have any questions for Ms. Huggins?
I, I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
No, sir, I have no questions.
Ms. Bailey?
No questions.
Ms. Waters?
No, no questions.
Dr. Temple?
Just a clarification. The Burns School is pre-K through five and the Brentwood School is pre-K through eight.
Well, the Brentwood School is pre-K through eight. Yes, ma'am. The Burns School was, it, it grew over time. It was originally supposed to be in our MOU, a pre-K through five. It was a pre-K through seven. When we realized this over the course of the last year and working with our, our partners, we decided to phase back to the pre-K through five because it's what's in our MOU. So they were pre-K through seven. They grew to pre-K through seven. This year, they're pre-K through six. Next year, they'll be pre-K through five. So those students serve very, those schools, pardon me, serve very distinct zones again of our, of our students, students in Charleston County. So pre-K through eight, Brentwood, Burns will be next year, pre-K through, through, through pre-K through five.
Say that again, Brentwood will be what?
Brentwood is pre-K through eight. It remains pre-K through eight.
It is that now? It has all those grades?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Temple.
Ms. Roberson? Ms. McKinney? I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion before the board is to advance to the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting for consideration to approve the acknowledgement hereto that Meeting Street Elementary Public Schools of Innovation are in fact two distinct campus schools and thus replace the previous single school identification number 1001200 and be acknowledged as Meeting Street at Brentwood and Meeting Street at Burns with two distinct new school identification numbers upon acknowledgement of the South Carolina Department of Education and State Board of Education. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
So it's moved by Ms. McKinney, seconded by Ms. Roberson. I would ask all board members to cast a vote.
This is Ms. Waters. I vote yea.
Mr. Grabowski, I've just voted yea, but I actually have to drop off for the rest remainder of the meeting. So you guys have a wonderful evening and thank you for taking the helm for me this evening.
And the motion passes. Excellent. Moving on to item 4C.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. I want to thank Ms. Simmons and her team.
Hold on for a second. So we just get it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Grabowski.
Before the board is a request for a motion to advance to the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting for consideration to approve all proposed courses for SY 2024-25. Ms. Huggins?
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. I want to thank Ms. Simmons and members of her team for their work on this. She's asked me to defer it down to Mrs., to Buffy Roberts, to whose team handles the local board approved courses. Ms. Roberts, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And Dr. Catherine Gere is also in the audience and she may be approaching the podium to answer any questions as well. She works most directly with this process. So Regulation 43234 allows schools and districts to annually submit our locally designed elective courses, any new state courses to be offered at the honors level and innovative courses to the local board for approval in the coming school year. So that's what we provided for you. No, no new locally designed elective courses have been submitted for the 2425 school year. We have submitted some information on middle and high school courses that have previously been offered in CCSD, and we are requesting approval for the renewal of these particular courses. All of these courses have been reviewed by our Learning Services teams. In addition to this court, these course renewals, we also have one new state course that our schools would like to offer at the honors level for the first time. That course is our honor, honors personal finance course. And the South Carolina honors framework requires that our local school board approve offerings of a course at this particular level, so at the honors level. This course does support our financial literacy board guardrail, which Ms. Huggins and Mr. Gordon previously spoke about this evening. And so we are just basically providing this information for you, and we're hoping that you will approve all these proposed courses so that our schools can offer them to provide more opportunities for our students.
Thank you. Dr. Temple? Ms. Bailey?
No questions.
Ms. Watley?
Uh, no, sir, no questions.
Ms. Roberson? Ms. McKinney? I have none. So we will move on to, for the board is a motion to move to advance to the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting for consideration to approve all proposed courses for SY 2024-25. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So the motion's moved by Ms. Watley, seconded by Ms. Roberson. I would ask all members to cast their votes.
This is Ms. Waters. I vote yea.
And the motion passes. Moving on to item 5A, the Audit and Finance Committee Report. I understand Mr. Calhoun's not here, but I would ask that Ms. Roberson is the co-chair of that committee, just to give a brief overview of anything that may be of importance other than what was discussed at the committee meeting or through board docs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grabowski. The following items were received at the January Audit and Finance Committee and will be submitted to the board at the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting. The action items, 2023, 2028 capital programs, phase four sales tax budget reallocations, the Head Start Early, Head Start FY continuation grant application purchases and contracts greater than 250. There was nothing out of the ordinary in any one of these action items. I would ask that all board members, when you have time before January 22nd, to please watch the Audit and Finance Committee meeting and submit any questions that you may have to Ms. Carlin.
And the other thing I'd like to add is that was one of our first meetings in which we actually had the opportunity for the public to have public comment. So looking forward in the future, I hope that the public actually takes to heed to what Ms. Roberson said regarding that meeting.
The next area was for information. We had an ESER update, the FY 25 budget process update. That was very extensive. We had informed discussions about it. The monthly capital projects report for November 2023 and the monthly financial report for November 2023. There's, again, nothing out of the ordinary that was reported. I asked all board members, if you have any additional questions, please email them. And please, when you have time between now and January 22nd, please review the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on YouTube.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Any questions from the board? Dr. Temple?
I just want to say that I attended the Audit and Finance Committee. It was very informative. There were a couple of takeaways that I think we should pay attention to. One is advocating for an audit calendar so that the audits are, you know, whichever audits we need to have, that we have a calendar of them to anticipate them. So it's, so we can plan for that better. I thought it was an interesting discussion of internal auditing versus the external auditing. And I, there was a discussion about bringing forward a list of the legal district lawsuits that the districts involved with, and also a list of district consultants and their purpose. I, I didn't ask this earlier, but it relates to budgeting and understand that there's a rubric. We're looking at the ESER grants and the impact. I, it would be helpful to see what that rubric is.
We'll be happy to forward that to you this week, Dr. Temple, in the, in the board brief. We'll send you a copy of that.
Any other questions, any of board members? Hearing none, we will move on to item 6A, which is policies and before the action before the board is a request for a motion to advance to the January 22nd, 22, I mean, January 22nd, 2024 board meeting for consideration of the naming committee for the gym court at James Island Charter School to be named Stan Wilkins Court. Ms. Stenny?
Yes, sir. I have Principal Thorne also on the Zoom screen. The James Island Charter High School community would like to honor longtime coach and educator Stan Wilkins by naming the gym court in Millie Kennedy, in the Millie Kennedy Activity Center in his honor. Additional details about Coach Wilkins' service as an educator in CCSD since 1990 and his contributions to the James Island athletic community over the past several decades can be found in the attached letter of support authored by the James Island Charter High School Athletic Director, Jeremy Holland, on behalf of Principal Tim Thorne and the James Island Charter High School Board of Directors. And I do have Principal Thorne on the Zoom if anybody has any questions for Principal Thorne.
So with the presentation being made, the motion before the board, before debate, is to advance to the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting for consideration of naming committee for the gym court at James Island Charter High School to be named Stan Wilkins Court. Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Is there any debate, any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will close it and put the motion to vote. I would ask all board members to cast their vote. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 7A. This is an action on the table before the board, a motion to advance to the January 22nd, 24 board meeting for consideration to approve the creation of a new contracts office position in the procurement department. Before I request a motion, are there any discussions from board as to how we should proceed with this issue? Ms. Roberson?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Huggins, let me acknowledge that you are correct. Normally, we would not have discussions about a position of this lower level, but we are where we are. So with that being said, for me, I wish that this would have come through the Audit and Finance Committee so that we could have discussed it more in detail and just present it to the COW to move on to the, to the January 22nd meeting. There are several questions that I have, and so I'm not sure if this is an emergency and if it could go back to the COW for discussion, or if we are willing to hash this out tonight and answer the questions.
Ms. Roberson, I, I certainly respect that. Appreciate your acknowledgement of that. I defer to Mrs. Carlin. Perhaps she can give a, a brief overview of why this is needed and, or Mrs. Carlin, if you prefer it to go back to Audit and Finance, and that's the will of the board. I sensed in discussing with you, this was somewhat emergent for your staff. But if you want to get that brief overview, it might be helpful for Mrs. Roberson, Mr. Calhoun, and the other board trustees members.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm actually going to turn it over to Jeffrey Craven because he is, he's the one that actually put all this together and his, his office is going to be impacted more than anything if we, if we, if we, if the board chooses to hold off. Jeffrey, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the time to speak in front of the board and the district leadership this, this evening on this, this topic. If there is time to discuss it tonight, I would appreciate it. The discussion of whether it's emergency is subjective, but my justification for this position comes from the, while it was a topic of interest when I came on board in September, the, the impact of the federal guidelines that we have to follow that were not followed prior to my arrival to the district is going to have such an impact to my office. And coming up on, between now and the end of the fiscal year, as we prepare for FY as we prepare for FY twenty-five, the, the size of my office is not appropriately staffed to handle the incoming contracts that we're going to have to solicit and procure that were previously exempted in the past. The, looking at FY twenty-three numbers, which was the most recent information that I had, the, the total number of purchase orders that would be considered contracts going forward are such that my, my office, I have no one to, to handle that workload. That I presented the justification in the documents and in board docs, and I'm happy to discuss any questions that we have at this time. Thank you.
What I'm going to recommend is I agree with Ms. Roberson. I think that she come up through Audit and Finance because it is a change to the organizational chart. I think it's a funding issue. I understand that, you know, there's, there's definitely, it sounds like a need for something, this position, hands down. But I think the proper, you know, procedure so that we make sure going forward that we're consistent with how we do it. I know it's, it's another delay for thirty days, but I, I, my opinion, I prefer it to go that way. But that's my opinion. Ms. McKenney? Dr. Temple?
I'm open to discussing it or considering it today. It sounds like it's needed.
Ms. Bailey?
I think it needs to go back to Audit and Finance.
Ms. Watley?
I'm okay with going ahead and going forward with discussion, discussing it today. As I heard Mr. Craven speak, I remembered the, the audit that we had on fifty-two thirty. And I think that what he said about issues with the procurement and meeting federal standards and there, and that audit just revealed that there were multiple laws that were broken. So I'm, I'm okay with going forward. I don't think that this is something that should be delayed if we can avoid delaying it.
Ms. Waters, are you on the line?
I'm fine either way.
Hearing the, I would like to make a motion to defer the motion to advance to the January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting for consideration to approve the creation of new contracts officer position in the procurement department after following a presentation to Audit and Finance and then having it move on to the February board meeting.
Second.
I have a question for Mr. Craven. Mr. Craven, if it is delayed thirty days, will it be an irreparable delay for, for your department?
The hiring process, if we're talking February before approval, and then I know my onboarding was, was not a very quick process. So I would, you know, that's thirty days beyond receiving a new member. So whether it's May versus April, it would cause, you know, more of an issue to delay, yes.
And, and something else, we're, we're not attracting a lot of candidates right now. And so I, I imagine that this is going to be a, a challenge to hire. So, thank you.
Ms. Roberson just brought up a point. Is there money in the budget for a position?
Yes, there is. Under the Chief Finance Officer umbrella, we have some savings that I'll be able to use for this position moving forward under contract services as well as supplies and some technology items.
I still have a number of questions. You know, why a contract officer? Could it be a purchasing agent who was doing this job before? There's just a lot of questions that I have that I think that we need to discuss. Not that the position is not needed. Who's doing it now and was thirty days actually, you know, causing a big difference? Because someone is doing it now, and I just think from a financial
Actually, it's not being done, and that is part of the problem with, with spending the federal funds. We, we don't have the capacity to advertise, excuse me, to solicit, excuse me, to produce the solicitations and, and get it out on, on the, on the skebo market to even do it. We, we're really struggling. I, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were aware of that, but we are really struggling internally in the procurement office to, to get all this done. Our principals are upset with us. Our, our school, some of our school staff are upset with us and, and so it, it, it is a priority, but I, I respect the, the board's wishes and, and if it needs to go back to Audit and Finance Committee.
You need a contract officer to do this. It cannot be a purchasing agent.
No, we need someone with a contract background that can, that can read through all this stuff. Mr. Craven, do you want to, do you want to answer her question specifically on why we need a contracts officer position instead of a procurement agent?
Yeah, just a real quick back history. This was a position that existed, that was dissolved more than ten years ago, I believe. I don't have the exact, the date on that. But this position is different than a procurement officer or procurement agent because this would be someone who would be negotiating and handling the contractual piece after we've done the solicitation and worked on that. So it's more about contract management, more or less. So right now, we're, we're buying stuff and executing, but then we're having a difficult time managing the size of the contracts, the number of contracts and seeing in, in going forward where I'm going to have nearly two hundred and fifty plus possible new contracts coming my way. I, I just, I need someone who is dedicated purely to handle the contract side, which is after the procurement part occurs. So a lot of the work that is done behind the scenes between the stakeholders, the procurement agents, the procurement officer, it becomes a contract and then I need someone to manage that. The people who are doing it now is myself and Ms. Robin McNeil. Ms. Robin McNeil's a procurement officer. She's not in the contract side. She's more in the purchasing side, handling small contracts, which I've been, I've done maybe nearly two dozen in my short time here. But the, the contracts that I'm, that are coming our way are going to be substantially more complex. And so I'm really trying to get out in front and being prepped for FY twenty-five. And as, as you guys discussed, all, all the Title I and Title II, Title IV, IDIOL, all those federal funds, we, we exempted twenty-one million dollars in FY twenty-three that if that money going into FY twenty-five, those same needs cannot be exempted anymore. They have to be solicited. I need someone to be able to manage that.
Are there, is there any further disquestion, discussion? Hearing none, I would like, ask all the board members to cast their
Mr. Keith.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bailey, go ahead.
So my question is, this is something that we did not need to be handled in this past year, in the past couple of years?
So the history that I was informed is the previous director handed a lot of the contracts in that position, probably to the detriment of the department as a whole. As I oversee contracts, I see procurement. I also oversee all the records, the records department as well. So that's all in my job jar. And for my position to be solely focused on contracts is, 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 it's too big of a scope. So that in itself, and then on top of the new, it's not a new change, but it's more of a, we were enlightened by the state in September. So prior to September, we had exempted and which negated the need to solicit contract and then manage those contracts because they were just, we were able to just purchase and move on. But going forward, we have to go through all that process to ensure we are spending federal dollars competitively. And I just need someone to, to manage that. In my position, I can't, I can't oversee the procurement, contracts, procurement and records if I'm dealing with solely just with contracts.
Okay, so this is actually a necessity.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I think Mr. Kennedy had a comment.
Mr. Kennedy, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I think Mr. Craven covered that when he mentioned the, what happened in September. So prior to September, across the entire state of South Carolina, school districts were exempting procurements from bidding process, a process above ten thousand dollars on federal grants. This was statewide. In, in September, the state notified through a, a presentation that they made up in Columbia to all school districts that they could no longer use this exemption process. And therefore, we had to bid anything but beyond ten thousand dollars. So the volume increase in, in, in the procurement office is a direct result of that. And so as Mr. Craven has indicated, is an impossibility for that department to manage this increased volume without another person. Now, I haven't personally gone in and taken a look at the specific position, but as he indicated, at some point in the district, there was a contracts officer position that was vacated some, some years ago.
When was the Audit and Finance Agenda meeting in December?
I'm just going, because the date of this memorandum is December fourteenth, and it just seems like it. I mean, I could understand it if it was after the agenda meeting, why it didn't make Audit and Finance.
Again, Mr. Grabowski, I'll, I'll be glad to respond on that. You know, positions don't typically go to Audit and Finance as a committee for approval. So the thought process, and as we discussed with the board officers, was to bring this to the board because it was a board directive. And I understand where Ms. Roberson, of course, is coming from, but Mrs. Carlin identified the funds for the position. Mr. Craven came to me to discuss or through Ms. Carlin, the need for the position. And so the thought process among the senior officers is that, since it was a board directive, that any changes to the organizational chart come to the board for consideration, that we come to the board and in open session, not executive session, to discuss our need mid-year to add a position. Again, I don't discount anything that Mrs. Roberson says, but I, I do want to respond on behalf of Mrs. Carlin that it was a cabinet level, it was a superintendent decision to, to put this on the committee of the whole agenda versus the Audit and Finance. Again, not in an attempt to be disrespectful, but instead in consideration of the board motion and May eighteen directive. And again, we work at the will of the board, so the will of the majority of the board is that it go back to Audit and Finance. We'll, we'll, we'll do what we're asked to do. And/or a healthy compromise might be a, a special called Audit and Finance meeting that might take up the matter.
Ms. Huggins?
Yeah, yes, Mrs. Watley.
Sorry to interrupt you. Mr. Grabowski, I, I just, I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, I hate to use this word, mismanaging or micromanaging and getting hung up on perhaps a, a procedure or protocol. But I, I think that this could potentially harm the district if, if we don't expedite.
I'm just going to respond to that and then I'm going to leave this alone. The May eighteenth directive is harming the district, not this right here. It's not what you're asking for. So the motion is on the floor. We can call it for a vote.
The motion is on the floor and I will call it for a vote. And I would ask all members to cast a vote.
Would you please reread the, the motion that we're actually voting for?
Gladly. Motion is to defer. Yeah, but the motion that I made was to defer the motion to advance to the February two thousand and twenty-four board meeting for consideration to approve the creation of a new contracts officer position in the procurement department after view approval at the February Audit and Finance meeting. That's the motion that's on the table on the floor right now.
So Mr. Grabowski, are you willing to amend your motion in order to not delay this process?
You can vote against it.
Yeah, I, I think it's better just to take the vote.
This does not say what you just said.
Right, Mr. Grabowski, I was, I was pointing out that the motion that was in front of us wasn't what you had said.
We're, we're working on it, Ms. Watley.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. There we go. So the, the motion on the floor at the moment is a motion to defer to advance February twenty, twenty twenty-four board meeting.
I hope that was on camera.
What you said.
You're welcome. No, I want to get up too. I'm not sure I can. That's better than I said it.
So the motion is to defer to the February Audit and Finance Committee a meeting consideration to approve the creation of a new contracts officer position in the procurement department. I would ask all board members to cast their votes. So the motion passes.
No.
No, no, I'm sorry, fails. Motion. That's right. That's right. The motion fails. The motion fails. It's three. So it goes. So we will move on to the original motion on the table, which is a motion to advance to the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting for consideration to approve the creation of a new contracts officer in the procurement department.
Has it been moved and seconded?
Do I have a motion?
So moved? So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion's made by Ms. McKenna and seconded by Ms. Temple. Dr. Temple, any further debate? Ms. McKenna?
No.
Ms. Roberson? Dr. Temple? Ms. Watley?
No.
Ms. Bailey?
Nope.
Ms. Waters?
Nothing further.
Hearing no further debate, the motion is closed on the table, and I would ask it be taken to vote and all board members cast their votes. And the motion passes. Moving on to the item seven B. And that is uh for consideration to the board, a motion to move items for A, the continuous improvement plans, for B, the school identification SID and number, for C, the innovation and elective courses requiring local board approval, and six A, policy FF naming of facilities, James Island Charter School Jim Court, and seven A, the new contracts officer position in the procurement department to the consent agenda on January twenty second, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees meeting.
Mr. Grabowski?
Motion?
Seven, seven, eight.
It wasn't unanimous.
So it is not consent. Then I'll I'll redact seven A, so it's just four A, four B, four C, six A. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
I don't think we have to vote on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have to have that.
They're unanimous. They just go forward.
Mm-huh.
Fine, yeah. Does anybody object?
No.
Hearing none, the motion moves forward. Upcoming meetings.
I just, can I say something? Okay, I just want to say um we received an email saying that we were gonna have budget meetings, and I'm thinking we need to get that on upcoming meetings, February twelfth, three to five P M, March eleventh, three to five, April fifteenth, three to five, and May thirteenth, three to five, because that will be more um transparent about our calendar and our budget making process.
We also have a board meeting on January twenty second, Audit and Finance on February sixth, to be followed by a Cow meeting on February twelfth and a subsequent board meeting on February twenty sixth. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. All in favor, just stand up and leave.
Stand up and leave.